Good evening. I'm Mayor Dean Brooke and I'd like to welcome you to the January 5th, 2021, regular city council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and have a roll call, please.
Counselor Bettin?
Here.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Present.
Counselor Youssef?
I hear. Thank you.
Mayor Tim Baxter?
Present.
Mayor Brooke?
Here. Thank you so much and it's great to be back virtually here in 2021. With that, I'd like to identify any actual or perceived conflicts of interest that any counselors may perceive that they have with any of the agenda items this evening. Hearing none, we'll move on to public participation. Public participation is intended to be that part of our meeting where we accept any comments from the public in a three-minute format. We allow each person to speak on any particular topic that's not otherwise agendized this evening. If you do speak, would like to speak to an item that is on our agenda, we hope that you would hold those comments to that particular agenda item. But with that, we have Zoom links and if you just raise your hand, our moderator will invite you into the meeting, or if Mitchell Carter will tell you how to enter via phone, and that would be star six, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mitchell. By pushing star six on a phone, you can also be alert our moderator that you would like to make comment this evening. So with that, Mitchell, are there, do you see any hands raised that might be interested in participating this evening?
Good evening, Mayor. The correct number combination for a telephone is star nine to raise your hand. I do see someone. Phone number ending in 2752. I have invited you to speak. Please unmute yourself. Star six to unmute yourself. Give us your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
My name is Sweetie Marbury and I live at 22. My name is Sweetie Marbury and I live at 2256 West Second Avenue. I'm calling in tonight to advocate for our new water treatment plant. Again, I have read that we are in an extreme drought and this concerns me as a longtime citizen of Durango. I have lived here 46 years and I've seen droughts and how the city has handled it. Future annexations and development will need all the water we can get and especially from Lake Nighthorse. Water design and planning takes years for a plant. The city has been working towards this for decades. We all should remember the work of Fred Crager. Water should be a priority for every city council, in my opinion. I'm in disbelief that tonight you're going to go into executive session to talk about the old Mercury Building. I believe this should be a public hearing, not behind closed doors. In order to even buy the Mercury Building, the city would have to sell Carnegie, River City Hall, the Police Department and River City Hall, and still not have enough money. So I'm scratching my head, wondering why this discussion is even taking place during such terrible financial situations in our city. Small businesses are struggling and I do not believe you would have any support for going forward with the Mercury Building. But in my opinion, you should be going forward and talking about the need for a water treatment plant. Water rates were raised in the past. We have a savings account. We know that there are more people living in Durango. We know there are more people in the county. And the 2020 census will reveal all of that. Good planning takes time. I trust the staff in the Utilities Department. I understand their hard work and dedication. I'd like to hear more from this city council concerning the future of a water treatment plant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Marbury. And with that, Mitchell, any other, any folks with their hand up or?
Mayor, nobody else has raised their hand. If anybody is in the attendee list who wishes to speak during public participation, now is your opportunity. Please utilize the raise hand function within Zoom right now. Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody else.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mitchell. I might note that we do have a number of public comments that were received by our City Clerk's Office. Offhand, they include comments from Victoria Schmidt, Judy Gerhardt, and Karen Pontius. I'd like to note that those were received and will be made available for public record. With that, we have our next area of our meeting is Proclamations and Presentations and we have a presentation and update by our City Manager, Jose Madrigal, Agenda Item 5.1.
Good evening, Mayor and City Manager, Mayor and City Manager, Mayor and City Council. I'm happy here to present to you the recap of my first 100-day plan was it's been about 100 days, I think, pretty close to it. Started on September 14th, so just wanted to take an opportunity to present to the council and to the citizens just the progress I've made on the 100-day plan that was publicized as I was going through the interview process. The first part was just the financial assessment, just some of the major things that we looked at and where we're going to be looking at and identified during my first 100 days. We did a fund balance review. We didn't find any critically low fund balances detected. We do have some fund balances that we need to do some more looking into to answer some questions for the council and also look at what we want to use some of that funding for. We have the SURF Fund, which is our Equipment Replacement Fund, and water fund balances were things that were discussed during the budget process that were agreed upon to take a look at a little bit more in-depth for the council and so financial staff will be doing so. We did some capital budget guidance. We've proposed a, proposed a new CIP priority process and being able to go through our CIP budgeting process to get some council input at the beginning of the process. We've been doing budgeting and funding projects in phases, so doing design in one year, construction in the other year, doing what we can within that first year instead of placing all the funding in one year when we're looking at our capital budget. We're eliminating the practice of carryforwards for funding that has not been encumbered. If it has been encumbered, obviously, we can go ahead, but if it has not been encumbered, we are putting that back into fund balances and then allowing the city council to make the decision of where that funding should go back to. We have identified a couple of big projects that have been asked for for some more detailed review, our cost allocation methodology and procedure, our compensation benefits plan, and then also one that is on here is our inter-fund transfers in regards to how that works. And that goes back to the cost allocation part, but just want to make sure that it is known that that is for the inter-fund transfers that we have to have a little bit better understanding of what those funds are covering and why they are transferring between different departments or different departments or different funds. And finally, transparency. We did, we did execute our OpenGov software, which we are, had our first final kickoff, our first kickoff meeting this morning and looking to get that started to help our budgeting software to have better budgeting presentations to give to the council and as well as showing the public as that transparency piece of that software comes into play for the citizens to be able to take a look at it as it's updated monthly to find out exactly where we are in our budget and our funding and what our funds have gone to so that they can have the opportunity 24/7 from the comfort of their house to take a look at the city's finances as well. Stakeholder input meetings. One of the big things when I came into Durango, especially coming from out of state, was to make sure that I integrated myself as much as I could with the community. I did identify these nine specific areas and I am happy to say that I have met and checked with each one of those so far, so wanted to make sure that I followed up with the council to let you know that those are all done. I also did go ahead and reach out to some other stakeholders and businesses that were in the area, those that have reached out to me, just kind of a list of some of our community partners and some of the areas that I've had a chance to discuss and meet with, not an all-encompassing list, but just wanted to show that also went out and did some additional community and stakeholder outreach. At the end of the 100 days, this was at the end of the presentation of what I was going to give to the council. I have had regular one-on-one meetings with the mayor and city council members. We have made and looked at COVID-19 and some of the reviews that we needed to make and decisions on on those portions. I have met myself, I've met and introduced myself to the entire workforce. I did hold employee town hall meetings virtually. We reported the council on any modifications that required our financial models or strategic plans that have been affected by COVID-19. We've established the leadership team. It's another portion that we've been going forward and moving through. I've introduced myself to the customers of the organizations, those that use us, the, some of our customer organizations and community partners. I've established a systematic plan of developing communication to council, workforce, and customers and depending on what the messaging is to make sure that it's disseminated to the council and to our workforce. Beginning to create and establish cross-functional teams and providing my city council 100-day assessment to the council this week as well as this presentation. So wanted to make sure that I followed back up to show that I have checked off those lists on the items. And then just some accomplishments that I'm really proud of coming in the organization, working with council and working with a well-rounded staff that's been able to really accomplish some great things, going through with financial, with our operating and capital budget being approved, the open government contract being signed. We created a document control form to help us as its signatures go through the organization to make sure that proper review is being done and being signed off on. First now, we've hired a finance director. We've hired an HR director. We hired a media and communication, media and community engagement manager, and also did an organizational restructure to better help us facilitate with the challenges and needs of the community. And community support, we did spend the month of December doing CARES funding to local businesses. We have a program to do reimbursement for third-party delivery fees for greater than 15% and also kicked off a Durango CARES public campaign that will be really ramping up here in the next few days. Projects, we were able to do the 32nd Street property acquisition and the Red Ranch donation and did do some community presentations to the La Plata Forum, the Boulevard Neighborhood Association, and exit issues. Before I conclude, just want to thank the mayor and council for their support and their confidence in me. I want to thank the community for being so welcoming to myself and my family. Really excited to be here. It's been a great place. Couldn't have asked for anything better. And finally, the staff. Want to appreciate their support and their work in getting us forward and continuing to move through these, these first 100 days. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Jose, thank you so much. What an impressive 100 days. And I understand you've been on the mountain with, your kids are making it, getting a few more runs than you are probably, but
Absolutely.
Other than that, I think if it's not abundantly apparent to the public, we have really accelerated work speed during, during the pandemic even to accomplish this many tasks during the, during the past 100 days. And so, thank you, thank you so much from the city council. And, and I know you're getting accolades from the, from the community as well. So thanks, thanks for joining us.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
With that, item 5.2 is a proclamation for Martin Luther King Day, Martin Luther King Day Jr., Day of Service. So I will read this and do we have a recipient in our, for this particular proclamation that would like to speak afterwards? If so, I'll make it through and not, and offer that a short response from the recipient of Martin Luther King Day. Whereas January 18th, 2021 is the national holiday to observe the national birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who was born on January 15th, 1929, and dedicated his life to equality, social justice, and opportunity for all through nonviolent means. And whereas Dr. King's teachings can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing the challenges in our community as we participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. And whereas the city council and staff of the city of Durango are dedicated to advancing initiatives to institute diversity, equity, and inclusion, and are committed to ensuring all residents have equitable opportunities to lead peaceful, productive, and safe lives. And whereas the King Holiday and Service Act enacted in 1994 designated the King Holiday as a national day of volunteer service. And whereas serving on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, meet local and national needs, bring our citizens together, and strengthen our communities and nation. And whereas the King Day of Service offers an opportunity for people to give back to their communities and make an ongoing commitment to service throughout the year. And whereas honoring Dr. King's legacy, citizens of Durango can contribute to making our community a better and increasing equity and opportunity for all by volunteering and participating in local service programs. Now therefore, I, Dean Brooke, Mayor of Durango, Colorado, do hereby proclaim January 18th, 2021, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service in Durango, and call upon our community to pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. through participation in community service projects on the Martin Luther King Day and throughout the year. Dean, our Brooke Mayor. So I don't know if a member of staff or if there's a, there we go. Anybody like to speak to this issue? Sandy?
I will, I'm going to turn it right over to two members of the city's core team. Imogen Ainsworth, who is the city's Sustainability Coordinator, and Rita Wardfield, who is one of our police commanders. So off to you, Imogen.
And so this proclamation was brought forward by the core team, which is an interdepartmental team within the city as part of our ongoing diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts and in recognition of Dr. King's legacy. Recognizing that Martin Luther King Jr. Day is a day of service, the core team also wanted to provide an opportunity for city staff and community members to give back. And so we're also launching, we wanted to use this opportunity to announce that we're launching a community hats, socks, scarves, gloves, and cloth face coverings drive. And I'll hand over to Rita with, for some of the details.
So tomorrow, starting tomorrow through Friday, January 15th, we are going to start collecting items from the community, small, warm things that people can wear during this cold weather that we're encountering. And we're going to have four different locations where people can drop it off at four city locations, where the rec center, the library, city hall, and the Durango Police Department during open hours, starting tomorrow through the 15th. And we'll have two bins outside of each place and you can drop off new items in one bin and the other items are gently used, clean items. And then, you know, we're entering our coldest months and there's not too many clothing drives out there, so it's a really good way to put Martin Luther King's words into action. And so we're going to distribute these items, city volunteers, city employees who are volunteering their time on this, on this day off, are going to distribute the items at the Mano's Soup Kitchen on Monday, sorry, Monday, January the 18th, from 9:00 to noon. And we're going to distribute them to anyone needing them. Any leftover items will be given to the soup kitchen so that they can hand it out to whomever needs it. And we want this to be a community effort. We really are excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita, and Sandy, and Imogen, all of you, and the core team for putting this together. And for those of you listening in, I'm sure this will be on our city of Durango website at durangogov.org. And if not, I will be announcing this as well on Community Connections, our TV spot that will be rolling over the next week. And so look forward to huge participation and, and thanks staff for putting this together. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 5.3, which is the National Mentoring Month Proclamation. National Mentoring Month, whereas January 2021 will mark the 19th anniversary of National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to focus attention on the need for mentors, as well as how each of us can work together to increase the number of mentors to help ensure positive outcomes for our young, our young people. And whereas Durango honors volunteer mentors who support young people by showing up for them every day and demonstrating their commitment to helping them thrive. And whereas organizations with mentoring programs, including Big Brothers, Big Sisters, the Boys and Girls Club of La Plata County, the Rainbow Youth Center, La Plata Youth Services, and The Hive, make our communities and our state stronger by fostering impactful, trusted adult relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks. And whereas Durango, during the COVID-19 panic, mentoring programs have stepped up to fill gaps for young people and families, connecting them with resources and ensuring that mentoring relationships continue virtually to ensure that physical distancing does not mean social disconnection. And whereas mentoring plays a pivotal role in career exploration and supports the development of workplace skills by helping young people set career goals, equipping mentors with skills needed to support the professional growth of young people and drives positive outcomes for young people and businesses. And whereas quality mentoring promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem, emotional well-being, and growth of a young person and their relationships with trusted adult role models. And whereas students who meet regularly with their mentors are more than 52% less likely than their peers to skip a day of school, and youth who face an opportunity gap but have a mentor are 55% more likely to be enrolled in a, in college than those who did not have a mentor. And whereas youth who meet regularly with their mentors are 46% less likely than their peers to start using drugs and 27% less likely to start drinking. And whereas almost half of today's young adults report having a mentor in their youth, and those, and those rates appear to have been rising steadily over the past several decades. And whereas National Mentoring Month is the same time of year to celebrate, elevate, and encourage mentoring across our state and recruit caring adult mentors in Durango. Now therefore, I, Dean Brooke, Mayor of Durango, do hereby proclaim January 2021 as National Mentoring Month in the city of Durango. And I believe we have a couple speakers, recipients of this proclamation, Vaughn and, I can't see who else is out there, Gay. If you'd like to have a few moments, we'll let, we'll bring you into the conversation here. Introduce who you are and have a few statements, yeah.
Sure. This is Vaughn Morris, CEO, Boys and Girls Club of La Plata County. Thank you, Mayor Brooke, and Council for endorsing our proclamation. As we all know, it's been an incredibly challenging year for everyone, including our young people. And the ability to celebrate mentors and caring adult role models and the ability to have, you know, people get together with these kids in these trying times is definitely something that we're all committed to. One of the single biggest protective factors in a kid's life is that caring adult role model and being able to, to provide that through Boys and Girls Club programs and things like Radical Possibilities with La Plata Youth Services, as well as what the Rainbow Youth Center, The Hive, and of course, Big Brothers, Big Sisters are doing with one-on-one mentoring is crucial to our kids. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight and receive this proclamation. And I'll turn it over to Katie or Gay if they have a couple of words they'd like to say as well.
Sure, Gay, if you want to start and then we'll wrap up with Katie.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mayor Brooke. This is Gay Weiss. I am the Program Manager for Rainbow Youth Center, serving the youth in our, in our community that reflect the LGBTQ+. And we use a very intensive mentoring program that has hit many challenges through COVID. All of our support groups right now are through Zoom. And let me tell you, people are suffering out there and really appreciate the proclamation and the support and the education and awareness of where our youth are at. So it's an honor to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Gay. Katie Popinski.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Brooke and City Council for having us tonight and again for your recognition of this important month of acknowledging the value and importance of mentoring for young people in our community and across the country. La Plata Youth Services works with youth that are facing challenges in school, at home, or with court involvement. And as Vaughn mentioned, we do have a mentoring program that we offer for middle-school age students called Radical Possibilities. And as Gay and Vaughn both said, mentoring is a critical and very important way in which adults in our community can give back to our youth through forming these types of relationships. And these programs are very critical all the time and especially during the time of COVID when connection is even more important as people are experiencing isolation. So thank you very much again for having us and for this acknowledgement.
Thank you so much. These are, this is what makes a community function, especially as it was pointed out in the proclamation during this time of COVID, to keep our youth active and out of trouble and engaged. And it's, you know, this is my favorite, as you know, for my role as mayor is in your role in the community, as well as my hat with the Elpamar Foundation. We really appreciate all of your organizations, as well as Boys and Girls, as well as Big Brothers, Big Sisters. And so thank you all for being who you are. It's, it means so much to our community. So thanks. With that, we'll move on to Item 5.4, which is Durango Fire Protection District Annual Report and accompanied with the fire mitigation proposal for the city of Durango. So we have Chief Hal Doty. There he is, magically. Good evening, Hal, and welcome.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Just fine.
Great. Well, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Madrigal, city staff, thanks very much for having us on this evening. I actually have my team of managers that are on as well in case there's any specific questions about what I'm going to present tonight. But we've put together a short PowerPoint presentation. We were asked to really present on three items. The first being what did our 2020 year and service provision look like with a specific focus on the city. Second of all, what does our budget look like and how are we doing money-wise? And then finally, I'd like to do a little bit of cheerleading on the mitigation project that we conducted this year and talk about what the possibilities for the future of fire mitigation for the city look like. So if that, if that all sounds okay, I'd be glad to get started. We can go ahead and advance the slide. You're never going to see me give you a presentation without showing you some pictures of the, the men and women that work for us here in the city of Durango and the Durango Fire Protection District. I'll remind you that we're about 180 strong and that's a combination of full-time firefighter and medics, part-time folks, both contractual, seasonal, wildland folks, and, and our reserve personnel, as well as nearly 100 volunteers that serve in this community through our organization. So our 2020 year actually started out very slow and we, we believed as we all got our hands wrapped around what COVID might bring to us, that we're going to have a very different year than we had in years past. And you can see that through the months of February, March, and April on our chart. I think that people were really scared to death about calling for an ambulance or going to the hospital. And that drastically impacted our call volume. At the same time with COVID that we were ramping up for what we thought might be the busiest we had ever been, our community really shut down the use of our service to a great extent. And so it was an interesting year starting out and trying to plan for what the rest of that year might look like was incredibly challenging, as I'm sure your emergency services department heads, Chief Bremer and, and others would tell you, they probably experienced very much of the same thing. By the end of the year, we experienced actually 1.48% growth, so a total in call volume of 5,481 calls. And so that was just a tick above what we had experienced in 2019 and was on target as we expect to grow by a few percent each year. The chart below, the second chart there that you're seeing, represents our call volume by month. And as you can see, our busiest month was clearly August. And that was because we had a pretty significant drought going on. A great deal of dry weather brings significant numbers of brush fire calls, which add to our normal load of those folks that are having heart attacks and car accidents and, and the other normal set of calls that we experience. So that's the representation of what our call volume looked like. Now I'll apologize publicly. This data set is only complete four days, five days ago. This is through the entire year of 2020 and so, so we were able to pull this together in just a very short amount of time. But we will incorporate this data into what will end up being our 2020 Annual Report, probably published in hard copy on our webpage by the end of March or so. So if community members are interested in seeing a comprehensive view of what our, our call volume and things look like, they can look for it there around the month of March. If we could advance the slide. Call volume by response district is an interesting graph to look at. And basically, I'm going to represent what you see here as the first, second, third, fourth, and eighth bars are very clearly the busiest stations that we have. And that represents Station 1, which is at Boto Park, And that represents Station 1, which is at Boto Park. Station 2, which is actually represented in D2 and D21. Our downtown and City of Durango station is so busy that we separate their call volume actually into two separate groups. Station 3 is out on County Road 252 near 250. Most folks refer to that area as the area where bread is. And Station 7 is our Three Springs Station, and that is one of our busiest stations simply because that's where the hospital is. And so call volume there is attributable to all of the transports that initiate out of the hospital to send people to the airport for flights, send people to other care facilities and things like that. So it's a very busy district for us, but simply because of the presence of the hospital and the EMS responses there. If we could advance the slide. This is a great chart. This chart actually shows us the breakdown of our call volume across all of the area that Durango Fire Protection District is responsible for. And so the dark blue area, you see that the area that is the most significant portion of our call volume, 64.7%, is actually City of Durango responses. And in 2020, we had 3,546 of those. The orange area is the Durango Fire Protection District, so all of the county area, which is taxpaying to the fire district. And then the other three areas are our mutual aid areas or unincorporated areas of La Plata County, which the sheriff is responsible for and we cover in first response. Next slide, please. Call volumes within the City of Durango, if you're interested in where the action happens in Durango. Quite obviously, the city core, which represents the downtown area, and then all of the area trailing off to the north, up north Maine, is represented in that first bar, and that's very clearly the busiest area, about 72%, I believe, of the total within the City of Durango. The Three Springs area is next, representing about 24.5% of the City of Durango volume. And then the areas in Fort Lewis College area and Jenkins Ranch, as well as the Twin Heights area are represented there, is a very small percentage of the work that we do in the city. Next slide, please. So if you remember, when we were looking at the volume of calls within the City of Durango as compared to our total, we were looking at a very significant number, 3,546 calls, or 46% of the call volume that happens from our response agency occurs as service provision that's within the City of Durango. This is a representation as we're moving from our call volume to our budgetary issues of where our money comes from, how we fund the district. And so you can see at the top of the list, Durango Fire Protection District, we generate about 32% of our total revenue stream from there, just over $5 million in taxation with our mills that we collect, and about $460,000 in specific ownership tax comes from that particular group within our response district. All of our EMS calls, we actually do billing of insurance agencies and then private party pay billing associated with EMS calls and ambulance runs that we make. And of that and all other sources of income, we represent about 34% of our revenue stream for $5.7 million. City of Durango, the revenue stream that my agency gets from the City of Durango, the 8.2 mills in equivalent taxation and $460,000 in specific ownership tax, is also about 32% of our total. And then we get tribal pilt money, which varies year to year, is payment in lieu of taxes for the tribal and trust areas that we protect, and that represents about $45,000 total, so less than 1% of our total. Our revenue stream then in total is, for 2021, we anticipate to be $16,600,000. Now, the thing that I want you to really focus on is what a great deal Durango Fire Protection District is providing to you as the City of Durango. As I said, about 64% of our total service provision is going to serve the City of Durango and its residents and its visitors and anybody that comes to town to shop and all of the tourists that we get in. And only about 32% of the total revenue stream to drive the services of the fire EMS agency serving you is coming from the City of Durango. So overall, a very great deal. Now, back in my old days when Mr. LeBlanc and I would put on our boxing gloves and argue over why that was important and how that was interpreted, there clearly are some advantages to serving in a community like the City of Durango, which is that there's not nearly as much area to cover, travel distances and transport distances are much shorter, and arguably, the water provision is a great deal more proficient in areas that are hydrated. So the argument there is that it's much easier and should therefore be cheaper to provide service within the City of Durango, as opposed to the more rural areas that we protect, which are much more widespread, there's more miles, longer travel time, and it takes a great deal more resources to cover that more expansive area. And so don't worry, I'm not planning on concluding this conversation with, so I need you to pay me more money. We're actually, from a financial standpoint, since our voters backed us and allowed us to move to 8.2 mills of taxation, we're actually functioning very well right now financially. And I'm really glad to report to you that the studies that we did and the preparation that we did in coming up with what that number should be before that last vote has really worked out well for us. If we could advance the slide, please. In total, just so you get an idea of what the organization's expenses are, our personnel costs are going to increase about 5% for 2021, and that's representative of a new position that we're creating for facilities maintenance. We have 16 fire stations, a new training facility, and an administrative building. And so there's a great deal of work that needs to be done to maintain that many buildings. And so we're adding that position to take some of the load off of our mechanic staff that's currently covering that. We're also increasing our daily response staffing, so the number of firefighters and medics that are available on duty each day, we're increasing from 22 up to 23. Total personnel cost for the year is in excess of $10 million for the organization. If we could advance the slide. Capital projects for the year, these are some of the ones that we're really proud of, they're the ones that you may be seeing. Currently, we are two and a half stories tall on our four-story fire training facility that's currently in construction out in Boto Park, just on the downhill side of Fire Station 1. That's been a sorely needed resource that we have been able to fund through our work in developing a capital improvements plan. We anticipate that to be operational probably by the end of March or early in April. It's been a much-needed resource, and we're really glad to have that becoming a reality for us. In 2021, we're also planning on replacing two of our fire engines. In total, Durango Fire Rescue operates 20 Class A or downtown sort of fire stations, fire engines, and two of those are going to be replaced this year, one to go at the ski area station and one to go probably downtown in Durango. We also intend to replace one of our water tankers in our fleet. Currently, we have nine water tankers that we use to transport water to any area that there's a fire that doesn't have fire hydrant service, and so we have to occasionally replace those. And we're looking at replacing a breathing air compressor for about $70,000 to go in our newly remodeled station out of Station 3. In total, for 2021, we're intending to spend just over $3 million in capital improvements. If we could advance. So total numbers for our budget for 2021, we're looking at about $15,510,000 in operational expenditures for the budget. Since our voters voted to allow us to increase our mills, one of our incentive items on that was to fund the capital projects that needed to be done. And so each year since that vote came through, we've attributed $1.2 million from what would be our general fund toward our capital improvements plan. And that covers that portion of the capital that the current constituency has, those folks that have lived here for a long time, built these fire stations and are now helping us to maintain them and keep the equipment up to date. So in total, we'll spend just over $16 million in 2021 to run the organization. We have budgeted for a sort of a long fall, an excess of fund balance of $359,000 in revenue that we intend to have coming in that is as yet unbudgeted for. And so we start the year saying that we intend to put that into our fund balance for moving forward so that we can continue to fund projects as they become necessary. So projected by the end of 2021, we anticipate our total fund balance, or that amount that we have in reserve, to be $8.2 million. We feel like that's a really healthy number for us. We're incredibly fortunate. Most of my colleagues that I have around the state that are fire chiefs are not working with nearly that much in reserve. So again, I feel like I can represent to you clearly that Durango Fire Protection District is very strong financially right now. If we could move on. I'd like to take a minute just to brag about the work that was done this year. If we could move to the first slide of this section. In 2020, I know that you're all aware, you had a presentation from Parks and Recreation and from the Fire Department and from some of our community partners with both federal and state forestry and firefighting agencies about our plan for 2020 to try to conduct some fire mitigation in the City of Durango. And we had targeted several areas that we thought were some of the highest-risk areas, and we ended up starting with the project that was going to be on the Powerline Trail. Now, for those that aren't familiar with Powerline Trail, it's the trail that exists back sort of behind the Jenkins Ranch area along the hillside, along that area of the ridge that's known as Raiders Ridge. And that mitigation project was in concern for the exposure that the residences in the Jenkins Ranch area had to all of the standing fuel, the oak brush and standing fuel that was in that Powerline Trail area. So an evaluation was done, and we decided that a fuel break would probably be the most appropriate thing for us to try to help protect that community in case there happened to be a fire. And so we undertook a project that encompassed about 6,000 feet or just over a mile of that trail, and we started out with a lofty goal of about 100-foot-wide fire break and ended up actually doing about 130 feet wide, the way that it all ended up. Now, one of the most important things I want you to know about this project is that it was truly a cooperative effort. We had state forestry, we had BLM, U.S. Forest Service, and input actually from other federal partners. We had Durango Fire Protection District, we had many members of city staff through Parks and Recreation and other folks from within the city. We got cooperation from other departments of the city. We got cooperation from the county, loaning us some equipment like an excavator and some dump trucks, all in order to pull this project together and make it a reality. And what I think that we can represent to you is that it did exactly what we hoped to do this year, which was prove that we can be successful with a fairly lofty plan to come in and mitigate, to make safer those areas where we have residences and buildings directly adjacent to city, open space, parks, and lands. Now, when you talk about 6,000 feet in comparison to the amount of interface that there is for the City of Durango with all of your borders, and then you start to consider the areas within the City of Durango that need mitigation as well, areas adjacent to parks as an example, that have a lot of standing fuel and growth, we've got a tremendous amount of work to do. And so every time I get the opportunity to speak in the community about fire mitigation, I represent it as it's a new lifestyle that we have to adopt, not just a one-time project that we're going to go in and do, and that's the end of it. I believe that a sound plan for the City of Durango is going to incorporate us committing resources to fire mitigation every single year from now until eternity. And I think that the way that we go about that is that we work with the community, we work with city leadership, we work with city staff, and we try to make the best list possible that we have to assure that we're addressing the most dangerous areas and we're getting the most bang for our buck with the way that we go about doing this mitigation. So if we could advance to the next slide, all the photos that you're going to see and hear are local photos. So this photo on the left is actually East Canyon Fire that happened in 2020 out between Hesperus and Mankas area. Now, the future of fire mitigation, we see as, we see our role in that being one where we bring to bear a great deal of the equipment and a great deal of the personnel resources that it's going to take to accomplish the mitigation efforts. We think that we probably are the best suited and have the most equipment, and it makes the most sense for us to become involved in that. Now, the contract between Durango Fire Protection District and the city currently specifically writes out fire mitigation as a future consideration or as something that is not covered by the contract. And so what I'm doing tonight is I feel compelled to come to you and say that we believe that we can be a big part of a continuing effort to work on fire mitigation for the City of Durango and within that area that we respond to and that you're responsible to protect. And we've proposed two potential moves, a 16-week fire mitigation crew that would be hired as seasonal crew, five members strong, and we would rotate those five members so that we get everyone on our fire crew, the opportunity to work on the mitigation, and everyone the experience of going out and working on actual fires, but committing five of our people to that on a 40-hour-a-week basis across the framework of four months, which is the standard framework within which we hire our seasonal firefighters each summer. The second proposal would be for us to commit to a year-round approach to the fire mitigation, and that would also be a committed crew of five members with some funding available to hire much larger workforce-type crews as we move forward, when we have a big area that we need to hit hard with a tremendous amount of people. And we have access to those resources through our relationship with the federal resources and the federal ordering system so that we can bring in a 20-person crew for a week to really get a bunch of work done in a short period of time. So we wanted to leave our proposal open-ended enough that it made sense to you, that you understood what we were looking at, and I'm very hopeful that through work with the city manager's office and through work with Parks and Recreation, we could come to an understanding and develop a plan that might be even a multi-year, a two- or three- or a five-year plan for how our crews fit into a long-term plan to get some real heavy mitigation work going. If we could advance the slide, please. The cost for a proposal like this, we believe, when we consider hiring these people, outfitting them, assuring that they have the appropriate training, assuring that there's the appropriate equipment there in order to be able to accomplish this mitigation. For the 16-week program, we think that we could accomplish that very effectively for about $172,000 and some change per year. And we anticipate, based on what we learned from the power And we anticipate based on what we learned from the, the Powerline Trail project that we could work within our parameters and very likely accomplish twenty acres of woolly treated or more. Now, I was trying to figure out what it might look like to represent to you what twenty acres would look like. And if you're, you're talking about acre squares, you're, we, we accomplished across the sixteen weeks that we had to do the Powerline Trail, an, an area that was six thousand feet long and about a hundred thirty feet wide. So if you imagine one acre blocks lined up one after another after another, we accomplished about a little bit over a mile long and what would be represented as maybe an acre wide in that project. So a, a, as you can imagine and as you can see in the picture here, there's a tremendous amount of physical labor that goes into doing this mitigation work, both with initially cutting the fuels and then with somehow taking upon yourself the, the action of reducing those fuels so that they don't stand as, as big a risk. And that comes through either hauling them off-site, which is the most expensive, chipping or some other way reducing them there onsite, which is more time-effective but leaves a lot of biomass onsite. Or possibly utilizing the opportunity to burn in place in piles or to actually lay fire on the ground and burn in place before cutting if we had the right areas to do that in. And it's my belief that across the, the, the full gamut of the city of Drango lands, there's gonna be a combination of each one of those methods of mitigation that will be the appropriate tool for us to use. Now, I, I think that if Kathy Metz were here presenting with me, she would tell you and her staff would tell you that it's incredibly difficult as we move to the community to talk them into feeling like it's a good idea for us to do things like open burning. And I think that across time, as our community experiences mitigation projects like this, they'll become much more comfortable with both what mitigation might look like. People were concerned that we're gonna move in and clearcut their backyards. That's not what our intentions are at all. And I think they'll also become more comfortable with ways of mitigating that all the way up to possibly pile burning, which we've done successfully in Dalabeta Park and up near Twin Buttes and, and even some prescription burning of, of fuels in place. If we could advance to the next slide, please? The other, the other option would be a, a, a program that would be a year-round mitigation program. And again, I'm proposing here a total of five additional employees that would be full-time employees, working on a forty hours or so a week basis. And, and I think that we can increase significantly the amount of acres per year we could do. Sixty-five acres a year is probably representative of three linear miles or more. And I think that there's some economies of scale when we look at that. Three sixteen-week periods would be just less than a year and three times the sixteen-week budget would be significantly more than the, the, than the four hundred thousand. So I think that we can accomplish a great deal by doing this. But it comes with a hefty price tag. And I, I wanna leave the door open for you as our, as our leaders to have the option to say, hey, we, we're prioritizing this fire mitigation, but we can afford this this year. Or we believe that we can grow into something different, but we'd like to start with this other thing. My proposal to you then would be that as your fire chief, I absolutely believe that we need fire mitigation actively happening every year in order to work on safetying up the margins between our, our, our built community and our, our wildland community. That wildland interface area that we have both internally in the city as well as on the borders. I think that for a, a fairly wide area of budgetary considerations, I've got the opportunity to provide you two really good solutions to start working on our mitigation program. And I would suggest that a great deal more work should happen between the city manager's office, city staff and, and Drango Fire Protection District so that we could move forward and solidify what our twenty twenty-one mitigation plans might look like for you. I think that that's all I have in the slides. If we could advance just one more. You know, cer- certainly we've got to consider the benefits of this. You can see here some photos of the completed mitigation project at Powerline Trail. It's not ugly. I, I got accused of, of being a lumberjack that wanted to cut down all the forestry in the state of Colorado. I got accused of wanting to come in and clearcut folks' backyards. I think that we made these people's backyards look like a park. And what I'm hearing from them as I interface with them is that they're seeing more wildlife than they've ever seen. They still have screening between their, their homes and the public areas of, of the trail. And they're incredibly happy with the work that we did. So that's all I've got for you this evening. I really appreciate the time. Thank you so much for, for supporting us in the Fire Department and thank you for the opportunity to serve the city of Drango.
Thank you, Chief Doty. That's, uh, thanks so much for that presentation and, and that proposal. I did, I, I did see that on your last slide, there was a, a, a number of grants and, and, you know, it reminds me that we need to re-up a couple of grants perhaps and seek out additional grants to help the city participate in a higher, at a higher level. I want to ask for, while, while you're here, ask any other counselors if they have questions. But, uh, you know, and I have one too, which is, uh, perhaps we can get, uh, once again, a, a good overview of the work that has been accomplished. Nala, your powerline work and, and, and kind of where we are in circumference of Drango in terms of gaining protection. But also the work that was done by the BLM, by the forest, Colorado Forestry. So we have a really good overview of where we need to prioritize, I think, is maybe one of the things that I, I, I struggle with. It's, and I know you've given us great visuals on that before and I think we probably need to have a little repeat of that soon in the future. But certainly we, as counselors, are open to, I think, participating in one of the, one or both of the ventures that you've proposed to us tonight. So with that, questions for, for Chief Doty?
Well, first of all, Chief, thank you so much for bringing this together. I know you've heard me asking and, and others. And I always use the example, none of us on council wants to see Drango looking like Paradise, California. So I think for myself, I really want to see this happening. One of my first questions is, if you could, if you could address sixty-five acres, what is that in the full, the total that you feel like you need to address in one immediate kind of push, two, three, four years? And then recognizing that it's an ongoing, how much of that would be maintaining what you've already done in the initial big push? That's one question. And I also saw the chipper there. And you and I've had this conversation. Why are we going to be renting a chipper? Why not just buy the piece of equipment and have it available? Is that included in this cost?
Yeah, so thanks for the opportunity to answer those questions. So I, I think that on, on, in, in light of your first question, one, one of the things that, that I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about here is that you, you have incredible staff within the city of Drango that's been working very hard on this. And, and, and I, I can't, uh, can't, can't for a minute go, go through this question without talking about Amy's work for, through Parks and Rec. And, and I, I believe that her job is actually management of, of the open spaces for the city of Drango. But she has worked incredibly hard on this project, pulling it all together, managing those grants that we've talked about, bringing all the partners together and, and doing, uh, doing that work. And, and she, uh, I, I think that in the first presentation that we made to you, the number was something like sixty-eight acres of perimeter that we're talking about with the city of Drango. And through the work that she's done with, uh, with, uh, but within her own job and in cooperation with BLM, folks that plan for mitigation work and stuff with our federal partners and state partners, they've identified about six miles of that that they, that they deem to be really hazardous and, and concerning to them off the bat. So of your entire perimeter, I, I believe I'm correct in saying that, that she's identified six miles that are the most hazardous. Now, if, if we were able in sixteen weeks to pull off this project, which was about a mile long, and we had three times that amount if we did a year-round project, then I, I think that we could safely say that it seems like the math works that within two years' time, we could effectively begin to mitigate those most hazardous areas that you have around the perimeter. Now, certainly there's a lot of things that, that come to, to play when it comes to how much we get done, how far we have to drag the materials, what method of disposing of the materials that we're using. You know, the more labor-intensive it is, the farther the distances are, the harder that is. We're really fortunate though, because all of the area that we're talking about this mitigation in is owned by you. And so you can decide what that needs to look like. And certainly, you know, there's the need to interface closely with the, the neighborhoods and, and the folks that live in those neighborhoods. But we have plenty of work there to do that if we are struggling to agree on a plan with one neighborhood, we have the ability to move to the next one and be doing meaningful work while we get that other stuff worked out. And so I would say that in, in, as a general statement, and I, I hope I'm not in the future made to look like an idiot over making this statement. I, I think that across a two-year period, we could really heavily hit those areas identified as most hazardous by your staff related to the, the city open space parks and, and lands that you own. Now, the second question about, about the, uh, the use of equipment. You're, you're right. We, Amy was unbelievably effective at bag borrowing and stealing all the equipment that we needed in this. And across the course of this project, we used dump trucks and, and, and track hoes and skid steers and dump trailers and, and the chipper that you saw the pictures of. Uh, I, I believe that the chipper actually was loaned to us by the BLM. And, and that came at no charge to us for use for this project as part of their contribution to, to the effort. The, the numbers that I showed you do indeed include the purchase of some of that equipment that we believe that we'll need. And I, I, I'd hate to get in the weeds as far as getting down to brass tacks. I'm telling you, I'd like to spend thirteen dollars on this kind of rubber tire for this vehicle. But I can tell you that I, I did absolutely consider in the proposal the need for some basic and standard equipment. Six or eight chainsaws that are gonna be working at a time, a skid steer so that we can, with a grapple bucket so that we can effectively move equipment in areas that we can get that. We were successful on a grant that Amy wrote in getting a piece of equipment that's called an air curtain burner. And we have that now in our, our, our resource repertoire that we can use on these mitigation projects. And in weekends that we aren't using them, the plan is to expand into community mitigation efforts where we would set that up onsite and invite the community to bring any clippings or slash or anything that they had from a neighborhood down to be, to be disposed of. So I think that one of the real opportunities that we have here is that for a manageable amount of money each year, we can amass the resources that we need, both from a personnel standpoint, from a safety standpoint and from an equipment standpoint. And we can get to the point where we can be very effective with this. And I, I'll, I'll tell you, those of you that know me well, know that I am absolutely not above begging, borrowing or stealing the equipment that we need to make a project like this happen as well. And we've got tremendous cooperation from our federal and state partners right now, as well as the county and, you know, the support that we've gotten from you. And so what, what we're seeing is we're seeing some synergy already taking place where, as an example, we mitigated this bottom area of the Powerline Trail. And the BLM is now actually considering a project which would include mitigation stuff at the top, at the interface of that city open space area, at the top of that ridge so that we could enclose the city's portion of that to protect the city lands from federal and the federal lands from the city as well. So there's some real synergy that I believe will come out of us committing to this project and, and seeing, I, I think that the Forest Service, the State Forest Service and the BLM will absolutely get in the game with adjacent mitigation projects if we keep on showing them our commitment to mitigating these areas.
Thank you, Hal. That's, uh, that's, that was exactly the point I was trying to, uh, uh, get a, get a handle on too, which is, uh, you know, what's happening on the other side of the city limit line and with our partners, the BLM and whoever else is out there that has land adjacent to ours and how we can jointly protect our, our border on both sides. So.
One more question for Hal, one more, please. Hal, um, if we went with the, the full year, just if, how soon could you get a crew together? Because I would assume maybe that you have certain windows where you can do more intensive work and when you're gonna be preoccupied under fire season with needing to be available for, you know, actually putting out fires. So could you take us through the timeline of once a decision, what you need as far as a decision? And then how you could actually bring that about and start putting, and we can start seeing the fruits of, of you and your team's labor?
Sure. So we're, we're currently have, uh, job openings for folks that we could very well utilize in, in, in the roles that we're talking about here with this proposal. Each year, we, Drango Fire Protection District has built a program up to where we're hiring about twelve seasonal firefighters per year. We've actually built a program now where I have three folks that, that are, are actually occupying full-time jobs now because the, the program has grown so much. And, and I believe that, you know, if, at, at whatever point you guys are comfortable with saying go, I will make the damnedest effort that I can to get an active crew out there hired, outfitted and working. And I, I think that part of the, the breadth that we have available to us with having a seasonal crew already in place, having my firefighters that already serve in Drango and the surrounding area, and then having a, a fuels crew like this that we have working on that, is that we don't ever have to work them so hard that we burn them out on that. If I tried to hire folks to just stand out there and cut oak brush all day long, forty hours a week for fifty-two weeks a year, they'd last about three weeks and I'd never see them again. But with the opportunity to move people through that program and commit to five fresh people every day that we have crews out there, I think that what we can do is we can, we can expand their usefulness. We can improve effectiveness because they're gonna get tons of chainsaw time. They're gonna get tons of time working with the air curtain burner. And it will give us the opportunity to, to maintain a really high level of effectiveness and efficiency with the way that we go about doing this by rotating folks through that and committing to five people at a time. The other thing that's worth saying, and, and this is, this is probably where we ought to end because I think this is much more a conversation that the city manager and I should have than, than with, with you as elected officials. But I don't intend to just flat-rate charge you a, a whole bunch of money and then you get what you get and that's the end. The proposals that I've made are based on my best guess at what it will cost me as pass-through funds. I didn't put it in the proposal, but my plan is that we extend the use of the fire protective equipment that has to be onsite. So our brush trucks, our tank trucks, on days when those are needed, add no cost to the city, just as we currently do with the other cooperative efforts that we make. And we do that because we're, you already paid for those. I mean, those are your resources. They aren't exclusively mine. Those belong to this community. And so we don't charge for those resources like we would if we were going to another community to do this kind of work. The second thing is, if we have a super busy fire season and we have a two-month period where we don't get a lot of work done, I don't intend to charge you for work that isn't done. My, my only intention here is to assure that we are building a sustainable program and that I'm covering my costs so that it is not costing my organization to be doing mitigation work in the city of Drango. That was the way that we worked the, the Powerline Trail project. I believe in total, across the entire summer of doing that work, which I, I had crews out there on average, three to four days a week for several hours each day they were out there. I, I think in total, we charged you guys twenty-four thousand dollars for that entire project, which is a phenomenally cheap number. And I, I couldn't reproduce that because I used the crews that I'm kind of paying to be doing something else in order to do that. But it was so important for us to have this be a successful project. We wanted to show a, a very positive result. So that's what we did to prove we could. And now what we like is the opportunity to prove to you that we can keep. So that's what we did to prove we could, and now what we like is the opportunity to prove to you that we can keep this going.
Thank you, Hal. And, uh, with that, I, I do think that, uh, you know, I see Jose is probably, uh, looking forward to, uh, your, your phone call tomorrow. So, uh, uh, with that, I think we, we will move on and I really appreciate your, your thoughts, uh, opportunities outlined and, uh, and concern for our community. So.
Great. Thanks very much for the opportunity. It's great seeing all of you again. I look forward to the next time we can get together in person.
You bet. You bet. Thank you, Chief. Uh, with that, we move on to, uh, item five point five, which is a presentation by Devin Schmidt, uh, for, regarding the utility, utility bill program. Uh, so with that, Devin, I'll turn it over.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, um, Mayor and members of City Council. I am Devin Schmidt, the Budget and Strategic Planning Manager. Last month, um, City Council had directed staff to return in January with a somewhat of a refined utility rebate and forgiveness program. So this presentation is going to cover the contents of that commercial program, um, as well as discuss how the residential program could work this year. Okay. So starting off with the commercial utility bill forgiveness, we are here at the City Council meeting today on one-five-two-zero-twenty. Um, should council feel comfortable with the criteria that staff is looking to put forth, the city manager could enact an emergency order, um, allowing the utility bill forgiveness um, for businesses that meet the below criteria. So, um, the first item would be a twenty-five percent loss of revenues, um, and that would be reviewed via profit and loss statement from the businesses. Um, the business was substantially impacted by COVID, so ordered to close, ordered to limit capacity, et cetera. Uh, the business is a nonprofit or a business that is locally owned and operated headquartered in Durango, so not a franchise or a chain. Um, the business is not delinquent in sales tax submissions, so they could be on a payment plan or a deferral is acceptable, but they can't simply just be delinquent. And the applicant's business activities are legal under local, um, Colorado and federal laws. So, um, that's the criteria that we were looking, uh, council had asked us to come back with some additional criteria for the commercial, um, forgiveness plan. And so, um, I'm going to move on to the residential and then later in the presentation, we'll talk about some numbers and, and costs associated with both programs.
Devin, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Um, just that, um, if the, if the business is a chain, franchise or chain, so to speak, but it's also locally owned, do they qualify? Because I can think of a lot of businesses where they're local businesses, also franchises.
Yeah, yeah. So, and that we could probably, I have that kind of high level for this presentation, but in our business relief program, we did allow those, um, chain businesses to apply. Um, what we're trying to deter here is some of those more corporate-owned, um, entities to apply that could receive assistance in, in a different means.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And Devin, what about if, if a business is in its first year of operation? Unfortunate time to start, and they're maybe even worse, but they can't show a twenty-five percent loss in revenue.
We did have that as well, and that's a really good point, um, councilor knows where these, so thank you. Um, we did have a couple of businesses that were in that situation, um, and we simply, um, just allowed them to move forward with providing loss of revenue, showing what they had anticipated they would have made in two-zero-twenty had there not been restrictions. So, um, yes, there, there's a couple of businesses out there that have started in, in two-zero-twenty, and we don't want them to not look at our programs because of that.
So a specific outreach would be made to them?
Yeah, and so typically how we've handled that, um, is they've applied for the program. We've asked for the profit and loss statements, they're not able to provide them. And so we kind of work with them to have some other backup documentation that shows, you know, they had anticipated this amount, um, and, and this is where they're at and showing those losses. So we've worked with a couple of businesses on that front for the relief program, and we can certainly include that in the criteria so that it's clear.
So is there any, um, conversation around whether or not they're, excuse me, currently delinquent on their utilities? And is, uh, is that a requirement that they can't pay their utilities or would this be going forward? Um, and then the other question I had was in the business relief, we had maximum amounts that we were giving. Is there a maximum here or how do you determine how much utility bill forgiveness each business gets?
Sure. So to answer that, um, first question there, um, if, so currently we are not doing any water shut-offs, that was enacted with the first emergency order. Um, so we could do it one of two ways. We could look back and say, okay, we're going to forgive any of your delinquent payments, or we could simply say, January, February, March, for example, we are going to, um, forgive you for your utility bill. Um, so those are a potential, those are two potential options and two directions we could go. Um, we also, um, you know, have the opportunity to, um, bill businesses and then offer the rebate. Now, of course, that's a bit of a more administrative burden, and that's what we've typically done in the past on the residential side. But, um, you know, there has been some discussion around that as it somewhat protects the integrity of our water rates. So, um, a couple of options there with the logistics. So I don't know, did that answer your question?
Yes, it, yes, it did on the first one, and then I would, the other one had to do with how we're going to figure out, or how you'll figure out how much each business receives or why, or what the rationale behind the differences might be.
Sure. So, um, with the water rates and all, and the sewer rates, I can, um, kind of talk a little bit about that. It starts with, um, that minimum fee and then is based on gallons. Um, so, you know, January, February, and March typically are year, um, a time where water usage is just going to be extremely high versus the summer months for some of these businesses. Um, so, you know, if, if all of a sudden there's a huge increase, um, and it looks like the program is being, um, you know, someone taken advantage of, I think we'd have to work with the business on that front to, to kind of mitigate that. Um, I don't know that we would certainly necessarily cap it. We ended up in a cap with the, um, relief program because we had a certain set dollar amount. And if council would like us to look at capping some of these rates, we certainly could, um, or even cap the amount of time um, that the businesses receives it. I would say from a perspective of, um, this program versus the relief program, it was a little bit easier to cap those, um, because obviously each one of these businesses is going to have a different, um, water usage, sewer usage, based on retail versus restaurant. And so it'll be a little bit trickier for us to come up with what those thresholds are, but we certainly can if council would like us to do so.
Thank you.
Is there any requirement, Devin, to, or have you given any consideration to the business needing to be compliant with public health orders?
So that's where we have the applicant, um, business activities are legal under local Colorado and federal law. Um, that's where we're looking in that bucket, that businesses must be complying with those health orders. Um, and we had that same certification process with the relief program. If a business wasn't complying with the local health orders, they couldn't receive the funding.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions on, uh, the commercial side? Okay.
We'll get into cost later, Devin.
Yep, yep. I, we kind of pulled together some initial costs of what we're thinking both of these programs would, um, look at. So. All right. Well, then I'm going to move on to residential. Oops, did I jump too far? Okay, no, I did not. All right. So residential, um, once again, yes, here we are at this council meeting. Um, so typically, we would have the rebate program application published after folks have filed their, um, taxes for the year prior. Um, one option we were looking at in this is, um, we know that, you know, residentials could use assistance now. Um, and so we were looking at the potential of deploying the application process, um, as early as this week. They would need to meet the rebate criteria, which I'll cover in the next slide. Um, and then we could receive that two-zero-twenty tax return at a later date from that residential customer, um, should we feel we need that backup documentation. Um, and the thought process behind that is, as I mentioned, typically this is a rebate program that happens a little bit later in the year, but we know that there's certainly some folks who could use assistance now. So, um, if I don't have any questions on that, I'll jump to the, um, criteria on the income limits. Okay, seeing none. So, um, we utilize the, um, United States Department of Housing and, um, Urban Development for the income limits. And so these are the two-zero-twenty income limits, um, based on first extremely low, very low, and then low income limits. Um, typically, the city would select, um, that mid-tier of very low, um, for the rebate program. Uh, our thought process with this was we could, um, pursue as we have in the past, or we could offer sort of a tiered approach. So for the first, um, you know, those that are at that, um, extremely low income, we could offer three months of, of rebate. Um, and then following suit, those that qualify that are in that very low percentage, um, we could offer two months. And then those that are in that low income limits, we could offer one month of, um, rebate or forgiveness. And so, um, looking at this, this is, like I said, it's based on the, um, Housing and Urban Development Authority, and we've used this metrics in the past. Um, I'll jump into the numbers a little bit later on, but currently for, um, the national poverty rate for two-zero-twenty, the estimate is around nine-point-two. So if you round up and you think about ten percent of the population that's in the city of Durango, um, that's who we would really see taking advantage of this rebate program. Um, so do I have any questions on this income limits before I move on to what the water rates are, the sewer rates are, and then I'll jump into the financial information? Okay. So, um, council and public is certainly likely aware of these water rates. So just wanted to provide a, a quick reminder of kind of how our rates work. So, um, you know, inside-city users have that fixed base charge by meter size, and then from there, it's based on how much, um, usage each citizen uses. Um, and then you can see on the commercial and the industrial, um, jumping down there, that's a, it's, um, tailored a little bit differently, but it, it's a flat rate between that zero to three-hundred-thousand gallons. Um, any questions on the inside users' water rates before I move to the outside? Okay. So outside user, same thing here. Um, it starts with that meter size and then, um, based on gallons and, um, what season it is, the billable rates are a little bit different. And then once again, you have your commercial, um, broken out separately, residential duplex and single-family residential. So then as we're looking at the sewer rates, um, similar process here. Um, it's showing you in a little bit different, so we have that base meter size for inside-city user and outside-city user. And then from there, um, you have the flow charge per one-thousand gallons for inside-city user and outside-city user. So, um, based on usage tier, once again, um, and so just wanted to kind of give that in a singular basis for, um, council and the public. And so now kind of moving into the fiscal impact, so what did, what does this mean to the city's bottom line? So if we're looking at this chart that we have here and we have our revenue categories, this is based on actuals, um, from two-zero-twenty of, uh, January one to March thirty-one. So if the city were to forgive every commercial water, um, that that would be every single commercial water that we receive, those rates, it would be that six-five-four-eight-eight-four. Now, if the city were to do the same on the residential water, it would be four-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-one-forty-two. If we're looking at it based on what, um, the predictions are for that nine-point-two, um, poverty rate, it would be forty-three-thousand-one-sixty-one if all of those, um, individuals that fell in that residential category asked for the rebates there. Um, so as you follow along on the water, you can see that those blue categories are tied together. So your actuals for commercial water plus your residential, um, water is subtracted from that new projected fund balance, um, over on the far right. Same thing when you're looking at the commercial sewer, um, taking into consideration residential sewer. Uh, those are the, the cost amounts. And again, with the, um, commercial side, that would be if every single business asked for forgiveness and we provided forgiveness. We don't, we would not anticipate that being the case, so this is really a worst-case scenario. On the residential side, we've broken it out in a little bit easier, um, or more realistic of what it could be. Um, another consideration for council to note is that typically the utility rebate program um, is a budget of eight-thousand dollars. So what we're proposing here would be a bigger, um, rebate program for residential. Um, so with that, and then again, with, when you're looking at, um, the sustainability fund, the yellow is trending, so you have your, um, commercial refuse and your commercial recycle, residential refuse and residential recycle, and those numbers are also deducted from that, um, new projected fund balance in the sustainability fund. So, um, I know this is kind of a lot to digest, so I'll take a minute and pause and answer any questions on this slide before moving on.
So Devin, if I understand this correctly, the commercial water is at six-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand dollars?
Yes, and that's in the actual time period of, um, January one to March thirty-one of two-zero-twenty.
And the total two-zero-twenty-one budget is three-point-seven-eight million?
Yes.
Is that, uh, that's not, so that's reduced in the line below it to show what it would be if we changed all of that?
So, um, that's not actually reduced, but the line below it is, um, the amount budgeted for residential water.
Okay.
Um, and so that's, that's a good point to point out there, um, for the public. What we're trying to show here is what the overall impact would be on that projected fund balance. So instead of taking it out of that budgeted number, it was really kind of on an actual basis of everything remaining the same, two-zero-twenty to two-zero-twenty-one.
So, so then the new projected fund balance would be lowered by six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars if you did the two blue numbers?
You got it.
Okay.
Based on three months, right? Just three months of forgiveness?
Right.
And again, to get that forgiveness, they would have to actually apply for that and, uh, uh, apply for the rebate. And that would happen after the end of the three-month period or?
Right. Um, you know, I think if we were to deploy this, I, I would think probably the, the sooner the better. Um, for some of these businesses, if we could possibly do it on a, a monthly basis, I think that would probably be the best option. Um, you know, that's going to be administrative, um, you know, a lot of administrative work for the city, but I do think that would help the businesses in the center, we could deploy the better instead of making them wait those three months.
That's a really good point, and I'm just curious. I mean, I know we have so many different sizes of commercial water sewer users, and same with, um, residential, but I'm just curious what, uh, one might look like for, you know, I, I don't know how I say an average-sized business in town, you know, kind of what, what dollar impact it is for, for, um, various organizations, if you could just provide me with a sample or two.
Um, I don't have that readily available in front of me, but I could send that to, to council, um, and. Um, I don't have that readily available in front of me, but I could send that to council and possibly break it, you know, maybe scale versus run, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I just, yeah, curious kind of what what overall impact it is to, we're looking at large numbers here. So we see what the impact is on city budget, but I was curious how how much it's really helping the businesses. I know any help in some cases is very much appreciated, but I was just curious what that might be looking like for them.
Sure, I can certainly grab that for you.
And Devin, could you please clarify, to me rebate means in my mind, they pay it in first and get the money back. And that's the whole issue is there's not the money to pay. So I was assuming this was a zero charge for three months. Is that how you're anticipating working this? Or can you clarify this? Because the biggest issue is not to charge, you're not to expect any of the businesses or these residents that qualify to have to come up with the money and then wait for it later.
Yeah, and that's a really good point. You know, typically we have called this the rebate program because we would collect people's utility bills on a residential side. Then we would reimburse them for that. I think in this situation, what would make the most sense to do would really be more of a forgiveness, as you said. So we would still capture the amount of water and capture the amount that we would have billed them. But it wouldn't be something that they would be liable to pay the city. So instead of having them pay and then us paying them back, we would still generate a bill, but it wouldn't be something that they would have to pay. It would just be for our tracking purposes to know how much forgiveness we've offered.
And for budgeting for next year.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, thanks, Devin. I don't know how much more we need to look at here, or if there's any other questions and how we how we come to a direction, give you direction and
Yeah, and we can, I've already covered all of this, so we can jump to any questions that you all have, and I'll stop sharing so that you all can discuss, but.
Yeah, thanks. And this is not a public hearing, but it is certainly, we've asked for this presentation and alternatives to bring this concept forward. And obviously, it's a work in progress if we, you know, I think the choice is whether we should direct staff to pursue this or in some format and implement it. As Devin said, while while it's of most impact to those businesses that are hurting right now. For a three month period. So Barbara, go ahead.
Yes, please. Thank you, Dean. I just wanted to, Devin, or the city manager, or even Cynthia, we had comment from the public about the use of an enterprise fund in this manner and possibly needing to come from the general fund. So I just wanted to get an understanding of the legal, any legal issues around what's being proposed or the best practices around that. And also, I want to thank you for coming up with this so quickly over the holidays because, and including residents, I appreciate that so much because I hear from people who I know the restaurants and others are hurting, but the folks that have been laid off are also hurting.
I'll comment a little bit on the best practices side, and then I'll pass it off to Dirk on the legal side. The simple answer is, I don't, we don't have a best practice on this one. This is something that I look at it as being, we're thinking out of the box. We heard this from businesses that came to us saying that they needed help, that this could provide them some meaningful help. So we looked at ways to be able to do it. So I don't think there's a guiding principle or best practice I'd be able to point to to say this is, this is how you do it. I think we are in some very, some once in a lifetime times, if you will, and we are reacting with it with an ability that we know financially, we'll be able to sustain within our, within our funds and be able to provide the support. As far as legal, we have, I know, Devin, you've worked with Dirk, and I don't know, Dirk, if there's anything that you'd want to add on the legal component side of it.
I'll repeat what I said before. There is no Tabor problem with an enterprise. Is it really a Tabor concept? So it's a, you know, government owned business. There's nothing in Tabor that prohibits this sort of thing. A business, you know, can make decisions about charging customers in a way that helps keep the customers alive. I mean, I think you could argue that the long term benefit to the enterprise of having healthy businesses after we exit this pandemic is important. The enterprise needs to have sales of water and to keep going, just like any other business. So I don't think there's any legal problem with doing it. And I agree with the city manager. Really no best, you know, best practice.
Getting a little bit of feedback from some somewhere in the in the chain here, but so whoever that might be just mute out if you could. But thanks, Dirk, for that, that that update and the
Just wanted to see Mayor, if I can. Cynthia, did you want, did you want to add anything onto that?
The one thought that I have is there potentially could be bond covenants related to any, any outstanding bond issues. Often there's, there's a revenue coverage ratio requirement that we maintain. We would just need to examine that and see if we would still be within the criteria set out in the bond covenants.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you all so very much.
Any, any, just a consensus, a nod of heads as to whether we should ask staff to move forward with this and come back with a specific more plan, a specific plan for implementation. I think this is a good start.
Well, Mayor, I think on this one, just to make sure we're transparent, this would be done through an emergency order. So if we received the consent, there really wouldn't be a comeback. We would just proceed with the emergency order because I believe, Dirk, that just takes, requires a city manager's signature to implement. So that's kind of where, that's where we're going. Just want to make sure that as councils nodding their heads, they understand that this would be something we would implement through an emergency order, which I would be able to have the authority to do.
Yeah, that's what I kind of figured too, because the bare details of it, I'm not certain that we need to be involved in that. I think staff can manage that very well.
And so that would get implemented right away than Jose, if you had the nods from council tonight? That's what you're looking for?
Rather quickly. We probably would want to check on a couple of little things there that with the bond covenants and make sure, but I think we're good there. But yes, it would get pretty quickly. Within the next few days.
For this action, do we need a motion or anything like that? You just need head nod?
Just direction.
Direction.
Because people can't every, all see us, I would, would encourage us just to speak our mind into it rather. And so I'm just willing to say I support this.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm, I agree with Councilor Nozworthy. I support this. This is what we were talking about doing as we concluded the year end, and I think this is another good program to add. It looks like our balances are still sufficient to do this in a sustainable way to the city. And like you said, Jose, these are crazy times. So important that we step in if we can.
I would agree. I would support it.
Support.
We got unanimous support. I think Jose, so I think, yeah, if he could proceed. And just a clarification on the, on the emergency order that this is intended to be a three month program. And then so that emergency order can be extended for a three month period, a 90 day period. Is that I guess I'm looking, I'm just thinking how that compares to our other emergency orders that seemingly were 30 days?
In duration. Emergency ordinances are limited to 60 days.
Got it.
But the emergency order that the council approved back in March or so, April, perhaps of last year is still in effect. So the emergency order that's issued by the manager under the provisions of the city code don't have specific expiration times on them. So if this, but the order could be set up that it's in effect for three months, and then it could be reviewed after that. So most, as you recall, the other items that we put in place, sales tax, deferrals and so forth, those were all done by emergency order entered by the interim manager. And some of those are still in effect. I mean, we, we weigh parking requirements, we opened up areas that people could use for outside seating, all those kinds of things were done quickly by emergency order. And frankly, those, some, most of those are still, still in effect at this point.
Excellent. Thank you, Dirk. And that clarifies my question too. But I think it is clear to have our intention of this, as people enter into this program, that at this point, it's defined as a, as a 90 day period, a three month forgiveness as opposed to anything longer until further, further ordered. So, okay. Well, I think with that, you've got some direction. And thank you so much, Devin, for your work and staff to bring this, this opportunity forward. So thanks so much. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Six, Review of the Consent Agenda, which is, the Consent Agenda is a list of items that are routine or non controversial and are intended to be approved by single action of council unless a member of council wants to remove an item from the consent agenda, consent agenda, excuse me. So with that, we'll have, first, we'll have a reading of the Consent Agenda. Amy, if you can help us out with that. It's fairly short this evening.
There we go. Certainly. Tonight's consent agenda consists of four items. The first three items are sets of minutes from December 8, 2020. Four, 6.1 is the minutes from the special meeting held at 3:00 PM. 6.2, the minutes from the study session held at 4:00 PM. 6.3, the minutes from the special meeting held at 6:00 PM. And our last item is 6.4, Discussion and Possible Action Concerning Resolution R 2021-1, Authorizing the April 6, 2021 Election of the City of Durango to Be Conducted by Mail Ballot Pursuant to Section 2-193 of the Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Is there any member of council would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, councillors. It's been moved in second, and maybe we have a roll call, please.
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Councillor Bettin?
Yes.
Councillor Nozworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Broke.
Yes, thank you. And with that, the next item on the agenda is continuing with the consent agenda, that's no longer necessary. Item nine is Public Hearings, 9.1 being a legislative and policy related hearing for consideration of a proposed ordinance to amend the speed limit on Animus View Drive. So with that, I'd look for a staff presentation. And it looks like we've got Mark Williams and Amber Blake.
So this is Animus View Drive, correct?
Correct. Speed limit on Animus View Drive.
Excellent. I will share my screen. Can you see this? Or is it not showing up?
Not yet, Amber. Not quite.
That's screen one, then. How is that?
I'm still looking at you and all of us.
Well, that's no fun. One second. Okay, we're Zoom. Sorry for these technical difficulties here. I would like to show this. Share. Nothing still?
Yes, still.
We got you. Yeah, yeah, it's not quite centered, but if we can get it centered and see the whole screen. At least on my screen, it's, I'm just seeing a portion of it.
How about that?
No change. There we go. Here we go. We're there.
Thank you. So good evening, Mayor Broke and members of the city council. This evening, we have a public hearing for a request for a speed limit reduction along Animus View Drive. As you know, from our previous study session, this item came to the attention of staff and the city council based on concerns voiced from the Animus View Drive neighborhood residents and homeowners associations related to vehicle speeds, bicycle and pedestrian safety as well as wildlife and noise concerns. On June 17 of 2020, the Multimodal Advisory Board made a recommendation to city council to look at reducing the speed limit along Animus View Drive from 35 miles an hour to 25 miles per hour. Staff took that recommendation and moved forward to look at House Bill 2018 1191 that had added optional considerations for altering residential speed limits for the, for neighborhoods. And then staff additionally conducted an analysis.
Amber, sorry to interrupt. I don't think your slides are moving. At least they're not on my screen. Want to make sure.
Sorry, I don't know what is going on.
They're showing the title slide. There we go. Now it's moving.
Okay. Here we go. So staff conducted an analysis of the multimodal board's recommendation to reduce the speed limit in relation to CRS 424-1102, Section 2. And the recommendation came to council to reduce the speed limit on Animus View Drive to 25 miles an hour based on meeting the definition of a residential neighborhood. In addition to the residential neighborhood classification, we also looked at factors, including a lack of pedestrian and bicycle facilities along the roadway, connectivity to the Animus River Trail that is not sufficient, as well as the existing right of way and environmental constraints. Attached to the agenda document this evening, there was a complete analysis matrix that was included. And this evening, we are recommending that you move forward with requesting that staff work on an ordinance to reduce the speed limit on Animus View Drive. This does meet city council's goal E3A to require and support effective utilization of resources to supply the following: mobility, accessibility, and improve community accessibility and walkability. I have the recommendation for the council here, should you need that later this evening.
Okay.
Amber, are we not, are we not conducting the public hearing tonight?
We are. And so this would be after the public hearing. This slide has your recommendation. Should you choose to move forward with requesting that the city attorney prepare an ordinance for a first reading after the public hearing.
Right. So we don't really need to by motion conduct the public hearing because we're doing it now.
Oh, my God, I
Well, we will. Public hearing momentarily.
Yes, but yes, I just wanted to make sure that when we did the motion, we did it correctly.
Correct. Well, and with that, is there any other questions of staff before we enter into a public hearing?
I don't know if this is the right time, Mayor, but I am very curious, and I would love to talk at some point with staff and council about if and when this road is ever scheduled to be upgraded potentially with our sales tax, 2019 streets tax. It obviously needs work. So I just was curious and I don't know if we can't answer this, that could be a conversation for later too, but it's just on the back of my mind as we speak of the inadequacies of this road.
Well, well put. I think if we can probably not pertinent to this hearing, but certainly should be addressed. And with that, I will open the public hearing and ask Mitchell Carter, if we have any folks in attendance, either by Zoom that can just use the raise hand function or by phone. If you simply push star nine, that will, you will be acknowledged. And once you're let into the Zoom, we just push star six to unmute. So with that, Mitchell, do we have any participants?
So far, Mayor, I do not see anybody who has raised their hand. If you are attendee in this meeting and you wish to speak to this particular agenda item, please use the raise hand function now. Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody.
Excellent. Well, thanks, Mitchell. And I think this is, this has been a long time coming. And so I think we'll with that, we'll close the public hearing and again, ask for any remaining questions that council may have of staff before we call for a vote.
Do we know when this would actually take effect?
Dirk, if I can ask you on that timeline?
If you approve it tonight, we'll have a first reading on an ordinance on the
next meeting, 19th, and then second reading two weeks after that, and then it'll be effective, you know, mid-February.
So we could get speed limit signs up and everything in mid-February?
Right.
Okay, great. Well, then I'd like to make a motion to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for first reading at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Brokey?
Yes, thank you so much. And with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 9.2, quasi-judicial hearings. And 9.2.1 is a public hearing regarding an amendment of the Twin Buttes Fourth Conceptual Development Plan and to the City of Durango Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map. So staff presentation, after which we'll open, have an open public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Brokey and Councilor Mark Williams from Community Development Department. So as Mayor said, this is a hearing where we're combining two different but related documents. It's the Conceptual Development Plan for Twin Buttes as well as the City of Durango Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map. The reason we're having this request is the Conceptual Development Plan or the CDP at Twin Buttes does a lot of things such as establishes land uses and densities, as well as locations for trails, fire mitigation, which is fitting tonight since we had the FDP here. So wildlife management plans and other things, but really the pertinent part of this is that we're reviewing the land use density and types. The original Twin Buttes CDP was approved in 2008 and has been amended three times since then. The CDP is really kind of a basic functioning document for what goes on in Twin Buttes. And so when there are bigger changes, such as when we negotiated to get land for a new elementary school, the CDP had to be changed to accommodate that. So that was one of those amendments that's happened since then. The reason we're here tonight specifically is there are seven identified areas where the land uses need to be changed. And that's the only change, or those are the only changes that are being made to the CDB to CDP tonight. It's just the, the land use and the density. And the future land use and the CDP for this should coincide and they do in fact mirror each other. The comprehensive land use plan is obviously has a much larger scope than the future land or the CDP map because it applies citywide as well beyond the city boundaries, whereas the CDP is only for Twin Buttes. The specific reasons that they're asking for some of these changes is to allow the, some of the map designations, which have been made incorrectly, and I'll show you that in the next slide, the specific things that need to be corrected. A lot of the times, these inaccurate or not realistic land use designations are due to topography or other issues. And by making the CDP more flexible by changing the land use designations, will allow Twin Buttes to respond better to market changes in the future. So for example, the current CDP is, is really, it's almost like a site plan or a subdivision plat where the level of detail is down to lot lines or even parking spaces. And the role of the CDP is not really to do that. It's, I'll show you the map actually. The CDP should look more like this, where you've got larger, less general areas that are defined. The white yellow is low-density residential. The orange is medium-density residential and the peak is mixed use. This is the future land use map that's being changed and the specific areas that are being changed, these are the seven areas. So real quick, Lot 49 right now is, or the Lot 49 area is designated as medium-density residential. It should be low-density residential. Parcel H is designated as mixed use. It really should be low-density as well. There's a lot of topography on this lot. So mixed use doesn't make sense. Mixed use does make sense over here. This is the main entrance into Tippel Avenue, I'm sorry, into Twin Buttes on Tippel Avenue. So parcel B would go from low-density residential to mixed use. Parcel C is where the, something that you'll be seeing in the future, which is a site that the city could get from Twin Buttes in order to use for housing. So we want to have that as higher-density housing, not low-density, the way it's currently configured. This is on the agenda for tonight. Later on, after this presentation, parcel K has a lot of topography, so it needs to go to a lower designation density. Doesn't really make sense to try to put as much density as would be required from medium-density. And then Phase 1 filing 2 is a future area for development. So the phases and the filings, it's all a systematic way of developing the project where you've, you've got the CDP that applies to everything. Then you've got Phase 1, which is what is being built right now within Phase 1. You've got certain filings to give it a methodical way of being built. And the future land use for that should be lower-density residential is based on market demand. This is what the new land use map will look like. This is the Lot 49 area, so it's now low-density residential. This is the parcel B that goes from low-density residential to mixed use. This is the, I don't know, my mouse just disappeared. My cursor is no longer, and there we go. Okay, so this is the lot that's going from low-density to high-density where we could get housing in the future. And then over here was going from medium-density to low-density residential. And if you have any questions about this map, while it's up, I'd be happy to answer them, but otherwise I'll move on. So to summarize the process, it's there are two documents, the Conceptual Development Plan and the Future Land Use Map. They overlap because they're separate documents, but they do need to mirror each other. Therefore, two motions are required. We'll have a motion to approve the CDP and then also a motion to approve the future land use map. The Planning Commission reviewed this same submittal at its December 7th meeting and reviewed the project unanimously, and there was no public comment. The first recommended motion is for the fourth amended conceptual development plan. And as you can see here, I moved to approve the proposed Twin Buttes Fourth amended conceptual plan with the findings and conditions outlined in the staff report. And if council approves that, we would move to the second recommended motion for the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map. And similarly, I moved to approve the proposed adjustments to the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map with the findings and conditions outlined in the staff report. So that concludes my presentation for this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Mark. What I see here is, you know, it's, seems fairly natural. The developer's not asking except in a couple places for higher density. It's sort of a shifting of densities. And mostly, a number of those parcels are moving from a higher density or mixed use to a lower-density residential, it seems. So, you know, it's certainly not what what a trend might be for developers to come back with a request for a higher-density project. It's just, I think, a more appropriate use of what they've come to understand is the the yield of various parcels in their original plan. So you know, I would be fairly supportive of this, of this issue. So that's, that's my, my understanding. The, get some other comments from council, and then we do need to open a public hearing? Any other thoughts from council before we go into a public hearing?
It's interesting because I was up there this summer looking at a couple of those different properties with some people who were thinking about moving here, and there were a couple of them, I'm like, this just doesn't seem right. So I think this change in plan is great. It seems to fit much better with the topography and with how the use would actually be.
With that.
Mayor Brokey?
Yes.
The representative for Twin Buttes is here and in case they.
Well, thank you, Mark. Yeah. First, before public hearing, we will, we can hear from Representative Twin Buttes. If you can make that introduction, invite them into the, into the meeting.
Yeah, it's Dan Burkhart from Burkhart Planning and Permitting.
Oh, there we go. There you are, Dan.
Thanks, guys. Happy New Year, Mayor Brokey and councilors. Yeah, but essentially this is just, I'm sorry, Dan Burkhart, Burkhart Planning and Permitting. This is, this is just an evolution of the project over the last 12 years. The first house was built in Twin Buttes in 2017, which was nine years after the initial approval from city council, you know, due to the Great Recession. And now COVID hit, that changed everything. Things are moving along. I think Mark did a great job covering everything. So Mark did ask me to quickly do an update on, on Twin Buttes counts. As of November 23rd, there have been 46 building permits issued. This year, the DRC has issued 16 certificates of design compliance, which equates to essentially 16 building permit applications to the city. There's about seven homes under construction now and a total of 32 COs have been issued at Twin Buttes. Otherwise, thank you, and I'll gladly entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions for Dan now, or are we, Dan, stick with us in case there's questions from the public as well? Seeing no questions at this point, I'll open the public hearing and again, ask Mitchell Carter to monitor and see if there are any raised hands in Zoom or for those, again, for those folks, because I mess this up all the time, that want to, are calling in by phone. If you use star nine, that will indicate to Mitchell that you would like to enter into the, into our meeting. And once you're in, star six will unmute you.
Mayor, I do not see anybody who has raised their hands yet. If you are in the attendee list and want to speak to this specific public hearing item, now is your opportunity. Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody.
Very good, Mitchell. Thank you so much. Not one of the most controversial items, but certainly a good part of our business of the city. So let's, let's, I'll close this public hearing and ask for any, any remaining questions from council of staff or the developer. And if not, ask for a motion. No new, no new questions. It looks like, Dan, you're off the hook for the moment. So with that, council, if I could entertain a motion?
Well, I would make a motion to approve the Twin Buttes Fourth amended conceptual development plan with the findings and conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thanks. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Amy, maybe we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Brokey?
Yes, thank you so much. And we do, the next two items are quasi-judicial hearings.
No, we have one more motion to make, I believe. That would be, I would make the motion to approve the amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map with the findings and conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We'll have a roll call on that second portion of that previous hearing.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Brokey?
Yes, and thank you. I thought the second part of that, we have two, the next two items are follow-on items for, again, for Twin Buttes. 9.2.2 being a public hearing concerning Twin Buttes Parcel K Preliminary Minor Subdivision. So again, staff report. And Mark, your, your sound was a little fuzzy last time, so I don't know if you can either turn up the volume or speak into the speaker a little closer.
Is that better? Can you hear me okay now?
Perfect. Awesome.
Thank you, Mayor Brokey. Mark Williams again. This is one of the parcels of land that we just looked at. This one is Parcel K. So when you come into Twin Buttes from the western entrance and go up Tippel Avenue, it'll be on the right. Currently, this is designated to have a density that would require to have four lots. There's a lot of topography here, so they are requesting that this, the land use for this was changed, which it had been. And so since the land use has been changed, then we can do this subdivision, which is to subdivide the property into three lots. These would all be single-family homes. They would have one shared driveway coming off Larkspur. Sort of unique among Durango's developments, Twin Buttes has, they track the amount of impervious surface pretty closely in this project. So having a shared driveway with one curb cut helps out with that. So anyway, each of these lots would have a smaller private driveway off of the shared driveway leading to the garage. And sort of the only unusual thing about this is that there's an envelope here so that any structure would be about 20 feet from the property line. And that's so that a car backing out of this lot, which is one B, would not need to go on to the lot, onto lot two in order to make that turning movement. And that's something Twin Buttes requested and doesn't seem like a big ask, so we were fine with that. And that, this just allows all these cars to be able to turn around and head out headfirst, which Larkspur shouldn't be an incredibly busy street, but there will be quite a bit of traffic on there in the future as more of Twin Buttes has developed. And so that's just a small safety measure. It's always a good thing to have. This is a preliminary minor subdivision that went to Planning Commission last month, December 7th, 2020. The commission approved the request five to nothing. We had one email in support of this project several months ago, and there was no public comment at the Planning Commission hearing. Because this is a preliminary plan review of council approves this, the applicant would resubmit the final plat, which is a staff-level review to wrap up all the details. And as detailed in the staff report, the criteria for this is from Section 6363, and it does comply with the criteria in the subdivision section. So the recommended motion is to approve the Twin Buttes Phase 1 filing 1A, Parcel K Preliminary Minor Subdivision, direct the applicant to prepare the final plat and milars and authorize the mayor to sign the final plat milars once all necessary revisions are made. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mark. And with that, I think we just jump right into a public hearing. And I hereby open the public hearing and ask Mitchell if we have anybody waiting to speak to this issue.
So far, no one has raised their hand. If you are here to speak on the Twin Buttes Parcel K public hearing, now is your opportunity. Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody.
Thank you so much. I think that's a, hopefully that's appropriate amount of time. We will close the public hearing and ask if council has any questions of staff or the proponent. We have Mr. Burkhart with us still. I am, I can say myself, I'm pretty familiar with this property and understand the shared driveway component, how this might be perceived by the, by the developer to be a better three-home sites as opposed to the multifamily parcel that was, that was there previously. And I think it's gonna be, it allows that property to be a better neighbor to a number of the homes that have been built up there is my perception. So with that, if there's no further questions of staff or the developer, I think we, by single motion. by single motion, or we can, uh, uh, take action on this item. Anybody brave enough?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we apprised the Twin Buttes Phase One filing 1A Parcel K Preliminary Minor Subdivision, direct the applicant to prepare the final plat and milars and authorize the mayor to sign the final plat milars once all necessary revisions are made.
Thank you, Kim. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Uh, let, maybe we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Brookie?
Yes, thank you so much. And for those of you listening in, don't go away, we've got one more, a public hearing to concerning Twin Buttes Parcel M Preliminary Minor Subdivision. So with that, uh, Mark, if we can, uh, get a synopsis of that?
Okay, thank you. Um, once again, Mark Williams, and this is the last of the three, technically four Twin Buttes hearings that we're looking at tonight. This is Parcel M. Parcel M is farther north in Twin Buttes. Um, Parcel K is just off the map to the south for reference. You would need to continue up Tippel Avenue. And this is really the extent of development in Twin Buttes. All of these areas up here are dedicated as open space. And this is a pretty large parcel, it's six acres, and it's got a lot of topography like most of Twin Buttes does. And one of the things the city staff has consistently done with Twin Buttes is, um, try to work with the land in order to develop these parcels because, you know, they are tricky because of the topography. So these parcels are actually pretty big. This one, Lot 92 is more than 2.1 acres, and then the northernmost lot is almost one and a half acres. But access to this would be off, um, would be a metro district street called Sago Lily Court. And they would have to, um, or they've plotted for a cul-de-sac that meets city standards, which is necessary for churning movements for our garbage and recycling vehicles as well as, uh, snowplows, if anyone ever went up there, although as a metro district, they would be doing that themselves. This is also big enough for DFPD vehicles to access. Lot 90 would access off the end of Sago Lily Court. There's topography along this property line, however, so, um, another private drive would be shared between these three lots, um, 88, 92, and 91. 88 needs access from the north because there's also topography along this property line. So having, um, this configuration allows all of these lots to have access without, uh, an inordinate amount of cut and fill, which is something we want to discourage. And then in order for DFPD vehicles to get past here and then get into these two lots, we would get, um, a fire turnaround access easement. That's something that we've done in a couple of places already in Twin Buttes on Aster and on Yucca, uh, two of the cul-de-sacs that are in there. And that's part of the unique character of Twin Buttes is having these, um, you know, we let them develop in this steep terrain and in, in exchange, we get some sort of, uh, unique, uh, customized turnaround areas. But that, um, turnaround would be required during the final plat process. This was also heard at the December 7th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, and Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve this project, and there was no public comment at any point for this project. And just as with Parcel K, this is a preliminary minor subdivision, and if it's approved tonight, the applicant would need to resubmit the final review, uh, for staff, um, for, for staff review. As I mentioned, the, uh, access is probably the only unique thing about this property. And I think I've gone over all of this. The, one thing that I didn't mention is there are some access easements for some trails that are in the open space in Twin Buttes, and those access easements are on the plat, so they will remain in trail. Access won't be impacted by anything that happens, um, as a result of this subdivision and housing construction. So the recommended motion is to approve the Twin Buttes Phase One filing 1B Parcel M Preliminary Minor Subdivision, direct the applicant to prepare the final plat and milars and authorize the mayor to sign the final plat milars once all necessary revisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And, uh, any, again, any questions of Mark on this particular property? Uh, up in one of the more remote sections of Twin Buttes? And, uh, hearing none, I, I will officially open the public hearing and again ask, uh, Mitchell if we have anybody in, in, uh, in the wings for, uh, public participation in the public hearing.
Uh, we do still have quite a few attendees, but no one has raised their hand yet. Uh, if you are here to speak about, uh, Parcel M in Twin Buttes, uh, now is your chance.
All right, well, I think we'll move on and close the public hearing. And, uh, any further discussion or I would entertain a motion on Parcel, uh, M?
I'd make the motion to approve the Twin Buttes Phase One filing 1B Parcel M Preliminary Minor Subdivision, direct the applicant to prepare the final plat milars and authorize the mayor to sign the final plat milars once all necessary revisions are made.
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you, councilors. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Brookie?
Uh, yes, thank you so much. And we'll move on to our agenda, uh, Agenda Item 10, which is the City Attorney. We have no items this evening unless, uh, City Attorney can think of any, uh, to, uh, talk about. Item 11, Introduction of New Ordinances, we have none this evening, uh, no administrative items, and, uh, which brings us to Agenda Item 13, Council Reports and Actions. Uh, we can take a little time to go through that. Uh, I might, uh, just first off, mention that we have, uh, uh, an organization in our community, actually, a, a person, Karen Zink, uh, uh, doctor in our community that has proposed a, a methodology of, uh, an accelerated vaccine program, which, uh, I introduced to, to, uh, our city manager, and, uh, it involves some allocation of city resources, uh, manpower resources. But, uh, she has proposed, in conjunction with San Juan Basin Health Department, a model for administering vaccines that is similar to a, uh, Channel Nine health fair for those of us that have participated in those health fairs, utilizing largely volunteer medical, uh, and community support to, uh, reach out to our community to, uh, uh, basically jumpstart and accelerate the administration of vaccines. And, uh, we had a conference call this afternoon to kick that off, and I know Counselor Noseworthy was, uh, participatory in that as well as, uh, members of our, uh, staff. But there was 57 people on that Zoom to, uh, uh, talk about organization of a, uh, of, of this administration technique, uh, starting a week from Saturday. And the hope is that we can, uh, that that organization can organize it and be ready with vaccines, uh, at the fairgrounds to take blocks of vehicles and be, uh, able to be administered a vaccine in, sitting in your car and then have a, a waiting period while, uh, uh, they're looking for, uh, any reactions to the vaccine and so forth before you're dismissed and can drive away. And then, uh, of course, the record keeping would be, uh, in accordance with that too, to, uh, allow for administration of the second vaccine, the follow-up vaccine, and have all that reporting done at the state level. So that was pretty exciting news, and I don't know if, uh, I know, uh, Counselor Baxter, uh, but Counselor, uh, Noseworthy was participatory in that as well. I don't know if you have any other takeaways.
Could I just add that, um, first of all, a huge effort and a huge kudos to Karen for pulling it together. A couple of comments that she wants to make clear is there's no logo and no ego involved. It is a community grassroots effort, working with and for the San Juan Basin Public Health, really working to extend their reach. There are also efforts underway in Ignacio, uh, in, um, Bayfield, uh, and in Pagosa Springs, Natio. And, um, so I think it's, uh, and also, uh, to the mayor, um, part of the drive right now is that we are led to believe that if we can use up all the supply by, and create a demand, we can get more supply so that the state will be supplying those vaccines to those counties, right now at least, it could change, that are actually using them as quickly. And our county has done exceedingly well. We're at about 70%, I believe the number is, of getting those vaccines out, whereas other counties are at the 30 and 40% level. So a huge effort to the whole community and applause to the, the areas that are doing that, that's, uh, Animus Surgical Mercy and of course, San Juan Basin Public Health.
That's, that's entirely correct, and that, yeah, that's a really good, uh, uh, point that we are, uh, one of the best counties throughout the state of Colorado for, uh, administration percentage-wise of, uh, the vaccines that we have received. So, uh, with that, uh, the other thing, I just wanted, uh, to talk about our, uh, Airport Commission. We had it just before Christmas, uh, we had the Airport Commission, and, uh, uh, believe it or not, we, we are, we anticipate, uh, that the, uh, uh, let's see, I'm looking for my, the, the recovery forecast, uh, currently is that we will be at 49% of, uh, utilization of our airport over 200, 2019. So flights in and out are at about 49% capacity of what they were, uh, last year, uh, for the entire year of 2009. Amazingly though, uh, if you're in the rental car business, our 10% yearly increase, we had a 10% yearly increase in rental cars, uh, through October, or in October, I should say, for the month of October. Uh, so, uh, not a, not a total yearly thing, but, uh, but, uh, 10% increase, which means people are coming to our community, people are renting cars, people are circulating, which, uh, hopefully they're doing that in a safe manner. Uh, but, uh, we anticipate basically, uh, a healthy, uh, nobody's leaving, none of our airlines are in jeopardy of leaving. Uh, certainly that was a message that was clear and that, uh, that we are having ongoing discussions about the seasonal routes that we enjoyed last year to Los Angeles, Chicago, and Houston. And there's actually discussion about, uh, uh, reenacting those for the summer season, uh, this year, uh, anticipating an end to, uh, some reduction in, uh, COVID cases. So, uh, all around, good, good news from the airport. And, uh, uh, with that, uh, anybody else have reports and actions that they'd like to share with the public?
Sure, I'll, I'll do so. So the Infrastructure Advisory Board met yesterday, and, um, they had quite a list of items on their agenda that went from drought monitoring to, uh, a system study for collections and distribution of our water. And they'll be doing pressure, uh, testing in the spring on that to see how things are going. Um, there's a drought management plan amended, so there's some tables in there that, for trigger points of when we go to, uh, restrictions on water usage that they're looking at. These are all things that the staff and the, um, Advisory Board are reviewing. There was a review of the forest health and source water quality, so how this kind of ties in with our fire mitigation. How do we keep our forests safe and healthy so that our water supply stays safe and healthy? So I just wanted to let you know that. And then there's the 2020 Water Master Plan that's being worked on right now. And a couple of the items that are being looked at, uh, in January are comparing College Mesa Water Treatment Plant expansion capability for treatment, uh, versus Ridge's Basin Water Treatment Plant, seeing how those two would compare with each other, which might be, uh, most functional and, um, most efficient and effective. Now, both those plans would incorporate using water out of Lake Nighthorse. So the Ridge's Basin Water Treatment Plant, obviously that was the plan in the beginning, but there's also the capability to take water out of Lake Nighthorse and get it to College Mesa. So the, um, the master plan, the people who are developing it are looking at which one of those options serves the community best. So I, that's pretty exciting, and we should have a little bit more information on that in January. And there's also a water use sentiment survey going out to our community on, uh, how they feel about our water, the quality of it, the taste of it, the delivery of it, uh, how they feel about what happens in a drought, how should we conserve water usage, all those kinds of things. Um, that's a really interesting survey. And, um, so that was kind of what the board was talking about on Monday night.
Excellent.
Do you have any questions?
I do have a question, Kim. Thanks so much for that update, the, uh, infrastructure master plans. So you said, you think we'll get information on the lake? I just previously sent an email just today on that very question that you just answered, um, whether the master plan will be addressing, um, the water, you know, getting water from Lake Nighthorse and where, where it will go. And so you're suggesting that that will be done and, and it should be, you, you think we'll get information back in January on that?
Well, Paulo Neal, who's with the consulting, whoops, uh, who's with the consulting firm and also on the Advisory Board, has said that that's the section they're working on in January, so the Advisory Board probably early February will get some indication of how that's going. The plan is still in draft form and it won't come to council. Um, we didn't get a specific date on when that would happen.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kim. Any other questions or thoughts, uh, related to that? And, uh, I might ask Melissa, Counselor Youssef, and, uh, Counselor Bettine if they want to share anything, uh, if, if not, we'll move on.
Sure, I just had two quick updates that I'd love to add to council, uh, a further council discussion I would like at some point, um, and maybe we can speak about it later. But I, I'm, I'm interested in talking further about the presentation today from Hal on the fire mitigation presentation, um, and adding that to an agenda at some point in the future. And also, I'm just curious if we at some point might be able to get an update possibly from staff on the Riverview, I believe it's Riverview Mobile Home Park, um, is that what it's called, um, that we're receiving the letters, so many letters?
Animus View Drive.
Thank you, on Animus View Drive, yep, the 117 homes. I just, we're getting a lot of outcry from that, and, um, uh, I, I heard a lot about it tonight in the strategic planning meeting. Um, I did attend that, I listened to the community meeting on the strategic planning session, and there were several conversations about this issue in particular as a means to preserve our affordable housing in Durango, to preserve what we currently have. Um, so, um, I wanted to, I'd like to follow up with that, uh, council at some point.
Counselor Youssef, if I may, just to give a brief update for the council, I, I did meet, uh, myself, uh, Kevin Hall and Nicole Killian did meet with the, uh, Karen and that group, uh, this afternoon at 2:30. We had a good hour-long conversation with them to kind of explain where, what they're looking for within the process, how the city could help them, uh, where they may have some things where, you know, what we're able to do and what we're not able to do, because some of those things are with the state statute. So we have met with the group, I believe there was Karen, maybe about six others, so about seven or eight of them. Uh, they have a meeting, uh, with one of their groups that's kind of teach, or that's going about, uh, creating a co-op, uh, that's coming from Boulder, that they're going to be meeting with tomorrow. And, uh, we told them that after that meeting, for them to please follow back up with us, and we'd be happy to continue the discussion if they had any more questions and, and thought process with that part. So, uh, as, as staff, we're on it and we're working with them.
Thank you so much, Jose. I really appreciate that.
And for the public that doesn't know, this is, uh, precipitated by a, uh, the, the Mobile Home Court along Animus View Drive, uh, is, uh, we are ma- made known that, that there is a pending sale of that Mobile Home Park, uh, and that might change the, uh, land use and the new developer. Uh, current tenants are concerned about their future and their ability to maintain, uh, residents at that Mobile Home Park, so that's what this is all about. Uh, and, uh.
So Melissa, I wanted to thank you for bringing up the community input session today. Uh, it was very interesting, and I wanted to thank everyone who participated, the stakeholders, the community members, staff, um, and also our consultant. It was wonderful. So we have another one tomorrow, um, with boards and commissions. And then council starts on Thursday with the consultant working on Patrick Rivera, working on our strategic plan formation. So, uh, we're moving on, it's pretty exciting, and it's a big time commitment for everyone, so I really appreciate that.
Yes, and one more add to that. Thanks, Kim. Um, I have had some questions from residents wondering if there will be any additional set, set sessions for community input. Some people were not able to attend. In the, in most of those cases, I've just responded, asked them to just send it in writing, but if there are any additional community input sessions, please let us know so that we can let our constituents know.
We do not have any.
We do not have any more planned at this point. If that's something that the council could, would desire, we could definitely look at doing so. But that's, you know, at the council's discretion, if that's something that they want to look at. I do think that we did receive some pretty good input and even as we listen through, there's a lot of these common themes that are still there. But if anybody does receive input or citizens do want to bring, you know, some more input in, by all means, they can, you know, forward the council, forward the city manager's office, forward that email to myself and we'll definitely make sure to get it to Patrick.
Great. Yeah, really good input was given. So maybe, like you said, we're seeing some common themes and we may see that as we proceed. So maybe it's best to just hold off for now and then encourage anything, I am encouraging people to write in and that we would include it as part of our strategic planning process packet.
Absolutely. I think we had, besides the panel, I think it got up to about sixty-seven to seventy attendees that all had the opportunity then afterwards to comment. And we have about, I think probably about fifteen to sixteen of them did. So it was really well attended and very excited about the attendance. You never know when you have public meetings and strategic plan, how many people are actually going to show up, but to see that many show up was really well welcomed and well received.
If Chris doesn't have anything, I do have a report from some actions, so I just wanted to turn it over to Chris for a moment.
Sure.
Nothing, thanks.
So if I may, I just wanted to give a quick update. We had the Alliance Board Meeting this morning and I want to give a shout out to bid the Alliance and the Chamber and probably other groups that I'm not thinking of, but who worked on Christmas Eve on the five star program. And I know in particular the Alliance did that because they were providing a lot of the administrative work on that. And in forty, forty-two restaurants were approved for that five star program in eight days all over the holidays. So that was something we talked about at the Alliance Board Meeting this morning. That information is available on their web and I will send it to council and the assistant city managers and city manager as follow up. Also with the La Posta Road, I know that Kevin Hall's met with, along with, I think, Mike Seacrest and Mike French, and they feel like so progress is really being made, there's a new owner of some of the property there, they've met with that person and things seem to be moving along. And then on the last thing, the strategic plan that we've been working on with the Alliance went through a major kind of editorial editing and a bit of just condensing, it's in the final stages and it'll be going out to some of the participants in early January. I also participated on the strategic planning and I do want to give a shout out to Patrick for the facilitation that he did, I thought it was very well done. And similar to Melissa, I would like to urge us to move quickly on Hal's proposal and I remind us that we have the two thousand and five directed sales tax. And I know, Kim, you're on the liaison to that board and they were not able to hear from Hal about the fire mitigation efforts prior to presenting their recommendations. And I'd really like to ask us to consider bringing that or asking them to look at the two recommendations, reminding us that we have five hundred thousand dollars in an approved, appropriated project for land acquisition or maintenance that has not been identified. So I see that as a potential source of funding to address what I think is a critical community need. So I would like us to
Barbara, to respond to that, the Natural Lands Board did request at the last meeting that Hal come and speak to them.
Right.
And I believe that, given December and everything, that it hasn't happened. So I'm hoping that he's on the schedule in January, I have not yet seen the agenda for that.
That would be wonderful. I would hate to think that we were slow to act on something of this nature. Thank you all.
Thank you. And with that, I think that concludes our reports and actions and we can move on to the last item on our agenda, item fifteen point one, which is a discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene in an executive session for the purposes of discussing the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real personal or other property interest as permitted in CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four A, specifically relating to the purchase of real property commonly known as the World Pay Building at one fifty Mercury Village Drive, Durango, Colorado. So I'd open up the conversation as to our purpose and ultimately entertain a motion as to whether we convene in executive session and what our purpose is. So I'd like, with that, I, you know, I'm interested in talking about this issue and what our purpose is. I'd like to understand what we have, if we have specific issues to talk about in executive session, such as any offers that have been received from anybody, or if we have a price to discuss, or if there is, if our conversation would be more general in terms of what purpose we would have in benefit to the city that we would have in acquiring this property. So with that, entertain any conversation about the need for this executive session.
Mayor, I would just add to your, I think the questions you're asking are valid, but I would just add to that, that I'd like to hear the staff answer, have we done any work through the planning department to identify the need based around this particular facility and how it fits in our facility's master plan? Because in my view, if that information hasn't been analyzed yet or gathered, it'd be really tough to have an educated conversation that would necessitate going into a executive session, in my view. So I think, is there a price on the building? I don't think it's listed, to the best of my knowledge, at this juncture. Have we been given a price? Is there really anything to even talk about? Or should we have a conversation outside of that in the public and just direct the staff to obtain that type of information? Those are the questions I have before I'm able to vote.
And I have for council, I'd like to say, I do think it's important to come together as a council and discuss this. I would also remind us that we went into executive session to discuss Buckley Park that had no price associated with it. It was really to provide, to discuss among ourselves under what conditions we might consider Buckley Park without tipping our hand to any potential partner. So it allowed us to discuss that in private in executive session. We also went into executive session when we were discussing the potential for land acquisition on the property near Thirty Second Street Bridge. Again, there was no price on the table at the time. We went in to discuss what did we think were the pros and cons, where, how soon? And that then provided the direction to the staff to act. So I can see the desire for action from the staff, but I also can see the need to have a real thorough understanding of what we want them to do without providing unnecessary information to any party that we may be negotiating with.
It also seems to me that if council has absolutely no interest in further investigating this, then that's direction to staff. Whereas if there is some, then that's direction to staff. So to have staff do a thorough analysis of everything before getting that direction could be a significant waste of time for staff. So I think that the clarity of where we go with this and what our next steps are is critical. And I would also agree that too, you know, we've had so many different prices floating around in the world out here. We also need to talk about the idea of, you know, what might work or not work? What would we absolutely exclude and what might we include? And I agree tipping our hand to other purchasers or to the seller themselves is probably not best financial practices.
Yeah, I would like to suggest that, you know, I don't, we can, you know, I think it's of general interest to any of us. That would be, on council, it would be imprudent for us not to acknowledge that it's, this is a significant building in our community. It has impact whether we own it or not and therefore we, as the city, need to understand what is transpiring with the current owner and what their intentions are and how we may be able to help them or make this acquisition for whatever reason we might have. And evaluate and continue to look at partnerships, what its purpose would be in job recruitment for a future owner, whether we land bank it or use it ourselves, whether we have purpose for it. And moreover, just ask, assign our staff to talk to the owners currently to find out, you know, where, what their future in Durango really is. Are they going to protect jobs in Durango is more of concern to me. So I think it's incumbent on our staff to have those conversations with the current owner immediately to understand, you know, what methods of disposition of the building, if they are not going to use it, would be appropriate? And is there anything that they can offer us in terms of utilization of that site? Is there any creative mechanisms that we can partner with them to make it available for either our use or another business or recruitment effort in conjunction with the Economic Alliance? And that kind of conversation is, in my mind, much more fruitful and should occur and we could give staff direction to do that. And out of that, if there are any deals, i.e. price tags, or that would be the topic of an executive session conversation, I would definitely entertain that. But I do have immense interest in the building, but I don't think we really have purpose in, and I know we have our facilities needs analysis, it hasn't been updated for way too long, and that would tell us, you know, how we would fit as a city in that facility. Acknowledging the fact that, you know, a multi-billion corporation has abandoned that building in favor of another method of employing four hundred people. So, you know, that's my concern as a city too, in our model, as we look at all facets of sustainability in our workforce and offering better service to our community, you know, is a building the best way to do that? Acquisition of a new centralized facility for city services? Those are the kinds of things I think we need to talk about internally before we allow our staff to go making offers or accepting offers or evaluating offers from a current building owner. So I think there's a little work to be done. I think we can give staff really good direction to do, to chase, to continue conversations and bring us back with some specifics as to what that current owner's position in our community really is.
Can I suggest that maybe we ask the staff, do they have, there were some questions on the table, I should love to hear if they have that information gathered. You know, it may be interesting going in and talking about it, but just to pontificate without that kind of detail for me is part of the equation of whether I can vote to go into this session.
Yeah, I think it might be important, you know, for Jose to just respond, I mean, we have looked at it, Jose has looked at it, a counselor has looked at it with Jose, there has been conversation with the representative of the owner, we can get a little update on that. And I might also add that it was identified as a topic of interest for the Urban Renewal Authority that we all participated in, identified that building in its vacant state as something that would be suggested to be included in a urban renewal district for inclusion in a broader spectrum of evaluation as to how it fits in the city, you know, what its opportunity is, should we include it in an urban renewal authority to incentivize developers to look at this building for future use? So I think whether it's our use as a city function or whether it's the city's role in recruitment of a new business to go in there and create jobs in our community. And so I think there's a lot of higher level, it's not a long discussion, but I think a number of those questions need to be researched by our staff before we can have a real intelligent response as to a direction we might want to take. And with that, Jose, sorry to answer any of the questions I know there's for you. If you could maybe respond to that and tell us what your thoughts are relative to what you know and how you suggest we would proceed.
So it's a very, you know, when you have information and you're the one that they're asking about, like, hey, what could you say without going into executive session? I want to be as careful as I can, so if you would allow me some time as I think through some of these portions, just to make sure that, again, I don't tip the hand, but I think what we can say that people know is a building is coming up for sale. There is a question whether the city has interest in that building and what would that interest be? We have a facility study that has been completed in two thousand and fifteen. That facility study does need to be updated. The scope of that facility study would probably be different depending upon the interest level for this building. So there's some direction specifically from the staff side that I would need in regards to the interest level of the council. Is this something that you would like us to spend time on? Is this something that you would not like us to spend time on? Is this something that you would be okay with us spending resources on? There are questions in that portion of it. Again, I have a report to the council, there's five of you, and I want to make sure that whatever I am doing is in lockstep with what the will of the council is. So those are the information that we've had. We've had phone calls from developers that have inquired about our interest. We have not been committal, we've just listened, we haven't really done much other than it's been informal communication of, hey, the article came out, city, are you interested? What do you want to do? So there are some things that are outside there that are out there as far as interest. But has there been numbers specifically generated towards us? No. I do not have a legitimate offer that has been placed there. It really is about the interest level. And as we all know, it's very difficult for a council to have a discussion about these things. Usually we bring them to a study session, usually we bring them to a council session and say, here's what we are, here's what we have. Council, what is the direction? But obviously, when it comes to real estate acquisition matters, people knowing maybe the level of interest could be used against us. So it's that portion of where that is some information that I have, do I have information to present? There's some more information, but do I have a price tag? No. Have we had any formal offers? No. But there is interest out there from the owner of the building, from developers on is the city interested in possibly using this facility?
If I may, I also like to express my experience as the liaison for the Natural Lands Board and also as a previous member of the Natural Lands Board. And we frequently go into executive session to discuss property. There is no purchase price, there is no offer, because the question is, should staff spend the time to pursue this? Is this something the Natural Lands Board thinks would be a viable purchase for the community? And if so, then staff has given guidance to go forward with it. And that's not a conversation that, it is a conversation you want to have in an executive session because it does express that interest and it's something, it's a, this is a standard procedure that the city has followed for many, many years about gauging interest from either council or from like the Natural Lands Board in pursuing a certain piece of property and how that works out. So I think this is in keeping with our general procedures.
So I'd like to
I would just offer then, all candor, I think, you know, this was asked for by one counselor, so I'm trying to get an understanding of what the circumstances around it are since we don't have a lot of information about when we should be interested.
Who was the counselor who asked?
No, it was me. I put it in writing, I put it in writing with my list of study session requests that I thought we probably needed to go into executive session to discuss this, along with eventually Buckley Park. So I'm the one who asked this and I believe Jose was also on his own, thinking that he needs this. So I would like to actually make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss the World Pay Building. No commitments, nothing there, just to, as a council, to provide the No commitments, nothing there, just to prove, as a council, to provide the unified direction? Or at least consideration for what should the staff be doing as follows? Follow up in preparation for any additional information we need.
Counselor Noesworthy, if I may, there was an email, obviously, that I believe that you sent about some items that we wanted to discuss. But that was not the cause for this item to be placed on the agenda. This item was possibly placed on the agenda because I'm seeking direction. As a city manager, I've had people calling in and asking about offers. I've had, if we were interested, I've had the building reach out to me and ask me if I'm interested. And I need to give them some sort of answer in regards to what is the interest level of the city. So the item being placed on the agenda is specifically for me to receive direction of whether there is interest in spending any type of staff resources? Or movement on this, on this item? If there is not, that's fine and completely, completely understand. But when the item was placed on the agenda, because it was real estate, I wanted to give the council the ability to, if you wanted to speak with it in public, you can. If you wanted to do executive session, you can, just giving the council the opportunity to get that direction. Because I don't want to ever be placed in a part where a building gets sold and the council's like, why didn't you do anything? Or if I did start spending resources and having council asking me, why are you spending resources when you haven't gotten direction from the council? So this item was placed on the agenda by myself and I did state that on the Durango Herald, so I know they're listening. I said this was me because I, I need to have that direction of what the body wants to do with this possible piece of property that seems to be coming on the market.
So noted, and this was, this was a suggestion on my part, action. I will remind that there is a motion on the floor to go into executive session.
I was actually going to ask if you would mind if I restated the motion so that it follows the actual verbiage that we were recommended to give, so we're all- Okay, great. So the motion to convene in an executive session for the purposes of discussing the purchase acquisition lease? Transfer, sale of real, personal, or other property interest as permitted in CRS 24-6-402-4A? Specifically relating to the purchase of real property commonly known as the World Pay Building at 150 Mercury Village Drive, Durango, Colorado. Would you accept that as your amended?
Yes.
Then I would make a second.
It's been moved and seconded, and so now it's time for further discussion and before we have a roll call. You know, I appreciate the discussion and I appreciate Jose putting it on the agenda for our consideration. You know, quite honestly, as I stated before, I do have interest in the building for what? I can't tell you whether it's beneficial in any means for the city to purchase it or make an offer, but I think it would be incumbent upon us to research that? And have staff time, the question has been given, asked, should we spend staff time and resources? I think that would be important to do in any case. I think, so I'm prepared without an executive session to suggest that we do in fact spend a reasonable amount of time to make contact with the current owner. Number one, make, ask for further clarification from regarding the proposals for public private partnerships, joint ventures? Whatever those might include that have been offered to date? And be open to further suggestions from those types of developers? And thirdly, move quickly on an update of our facilities master plan? So we can find out if we even need a building, how it would be, how we would utilize it if we were to do. And before we can make any, and I think that's only reasonable to do. And that doesn't take an executive session to tell the public that we are interested to that level. And if it's not of importance to the city to acquire, at least we have an understanding of what kinds of businesses we can assist in recruiting to our community? To diversify our economy and provide jobs. That's, that's, that's where I'm at, I'm willing to say that. Just to spend few resources to check it out, to move forward. Because we got nothing, we got no specifics to talk about until, until that's done. And I think it's, without making any commitments to purchase or commitment to the building? We should, as a city, be evaluating it like any other smart developer. So-
I agree, and I think, I don't think you need to go into executive session to give that direction to staff. I think just, I concur with everything you just said, and, and I think we should be interested in all those details. And at least on a cursory level or some level of detail, the planning department should give us enough detail to know whether that building is actually needed by the city? Desired by the staff to fulfill their facilities master plan needs? And if it fits any of the pieces, before we go in and pontificate as, you know, five inexperienced commercial real estate pontificators? In an executive session away from the public's eye. My point is not that we're not interested in this, it's just that there's not enough information to go in an executive session and have that conversation at this time. With something this complicated, it's much more complicated than any of the other projects anybody's brought up tonight. So I think you can, I would echo everything the mayor said, and we can give you the direction in public to, to go find those details out? And then the executive session will be warranted.
Without knowing what information we might learn in executive session? We don't know that there isn't any information to learn in executive session.
We don't know what questions Jose, the city manager, wants to ask of us to get direction. He spoke generally, but we do not know if there's information that needs to provide clearer, clearer definition for going forward. I'm willing to, to go into session, we're not making any decisions. We are finding out information that the city manager may need direction from us.
I would just add too, that I'm very supportive of providing direction to get information. I think we, we all need the information. And I would ask Jose one more time if, you know, you, you requested that this go on the agenda? Because A, it was a real estate matter, but B, potentially there was confidential information that you may have wanted, that you, you weren't wanting to tip the hand. So I guess I'm wanting a little bit more feedback from you on the need, on the need for that? Or whether these conversations, I mean, what you're hearing from council is that there's an interest to move forward? And to suggest to staff that you allocate time to studying this further, because we need to do more analysis? But whether we need to go into and having private conversations at this time, I would look to you. Because we, I haven't been part of those discussions, so I can't, as, as Counselor Noesworthy and Counselor Baxter are saying, it's hard for me to suggest.
Yeah, and you know, it's, it's one of those things, even as a, as a city manager, you don't know real sometimes what's important until you find out it was important. And, you know, there have been a couple people that have reached out, that they're developers. And, you know, from my side, I don't know, you know, if they were wanting it to be released in public of what, who they are and their interest level into it. And so I want to be cautious with, with saying that. Now, did they bring anything specific? Again, no. But it is a portion, you know, that, you know, helps me in regards to, do you, do you want to proceed any of these? Is it something that even interests you? And so it, again, from my side, you know, if I've got a direction to move forward and continue to move forward, that, that's what I will do. But it's kind of really up to what is the information that the, that the council is leading and wanting? And that's, you know, some parts of it that make it a little difficult? Because I, I don't want to say something here where somebody comes back to me and says, Jose, we didn't want our name released, thank you very much. And I don't want to do that either. So it, it does put me in a part where I'm just, you know, whichever the council feels comfortable with and the direction they want to give me, I will follow.
Well, relative to those offers that have been offered via, you know, to us? In, in, you know, without names or anything else, I mean, I'd certainly explore those. I mean, that's, one of the points I made earlier was, I think that without divulging any names? I think it, a reconnection with those offers, those, those firms that, that reached out to us as a city? For a potential deal, although there was no specifics to those deals? I think they need to firm up their offers and make their, you know, say what they can do. And that was one of my points was, we need to get back with them to find out if that is of any benefit to the city. I don't think that's-
So shall we call for a vote?
When I'm done, yes, thank you. And, and I'll ask for everybody else to weigh in one more time before we ask for the vote. So at any rate, that's, I, I think that direction, we aren't divulging any names here, we're just saying, go back and talk to them. It would be my direction, which doesn't need an executive session. So, but anybody else want to weigh in before we call, have a roll call? If not, we'll have a roll call.
Mayor Breckin Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Noesworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
No.
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Mayor Bricky?
No. So two thirds of quorum, motion fails. Is there any other motions that would like to be tenured, ten, offered this evening? If not, that concludes our meeting.
I would, I would request that we speak with Jose about when we're setting up a public conversation then about this? Because we don't want to lose an opportunity and we need to move forward in, in getting guidance to the city and direction to the staff.
I think, yeah, if I need to re, repeat the instructions I offered earlier, I would be glad to put that in writing tomorrow.
No, it's not in writing from you, this is a council.
It's a council decision.
So I, and so I am requesting that we, of course, with the conversation with council's support.
We lost to Kim.
Yeah, I can't hear you.
Sorry, I have a full conversation about this, so I would request that we get it on a study session soon as possible.
And I would request that it be a special session because I think we need to be, keep this moving rather than waiting for another two weeks or another week.
Yeah, I, I would fully agree, and I think with the instruction that I, I suggested, the, 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 the staff begin immediately. It is a real estate deal. I mean, we already have talked to, toured the building in fact, with the representative from the owner. So, you know, that conversation can be restored immediately, like tomorrow, it's urgent. I think our staff understands that and understands the opportunity as well as the needs for us to make any further consideration.
I was just going to add too, that I would definitely support a study session soon to discuss this. We, finding a special one might be difficult with all of our strategic planning sessions that we have planned? But I recognize the importance of it. And Jose, you brought up an interesting point with the names of the developers and not wanting to even divulge that. So I hope that we haven't put you in, in an uncomfortable situation with this dialogue. But I mean, I felt very conflicted in this vote because I understand that the desire for openness and transparency? Also the need to not tip the hand. So it's that balance right there. And I, I guess I just definitely further continued, support continued conversations as soon as possible? And further research into our facility needs in general.
Yeah, I feel that we have given, at least three of us have expressed to give direction to the city staff to pursue understanding more about it? So we can potentially have an executive session that has merit. So I, I think hopefully Jose can take that away from this conversation. We don't need to get to a study session to give that information.
That's a great point.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fully supportive of coming, reconvening in a study session. And, you know, we've, we've got one next week, which may allow staff to come back with some beneficial conversation? And either suggest further research or an immediate executive session to make some decisions.
So one is study session, did, I've got three mayor and four, mayor, Kim, Barbara, and Melissa, you said study session, correct?
No, I actually said a special session because, because I don't think it needs to be added in with everything else. I think, you know, it needs a special, its own topic, and I think it needs to be handled with some urgency.
And to Counselor Bettine's comment, if there's enough information garnered prior to that, it could be an executive session.
Okay, so just to make sure I get the direction, this is what I've heard and want to make sure I've got it all in ready. So proceed with calls that are coming in, if they do come in, follow back up with any calls about the, the World Pay Building? And kind of begin to start chasing them down. There looks to be a study session for, I guess our next one is the 12th? If this is an item that the council desires to be on the study session? And if that is, that presentation being what, what would you like in that presentation? Things that I could think of are being, you know, I know what I'd present in executive session, but I can also look at what you'd want in an open session. I can talk about where the feasibility study is today, I can talk about values of buildings. I mean, what, what values of the, you know, the World Pay Building is. I mean, we could talk all of that portion, if you want to place that in a study session, I can do that. I just want to make sure that I'm meeting the mark with what that presentation's going to be.
Well, so I would suggest that council give you like what they would like to hear, maybe in emails? So that we're not spending tonight until 11 o'clock talking about it, because I think we could. And I also wouldn't want to bump something off of a study session that we've already decided is a, you know, priority for us. So I think we need to balance the special study session versus the study session conversation.
I too am not willing, interested in minimizing the time on the upcoming study session? Because I think those are important issues to be discussed. So it would either need to be added time or a special session or an executive. And again, I think that it's important to recognize that none of us know what we don't know. And you're right, and so part of it also is giving you the opportunity to, to share all of this information? All these potential, all these calls of potential partnerships that may have come in, in a confidential manner? And getting our feedback, does this make sense? Does this not? So I recognize that right now you don't have that clear direction. You've got calls coming in and you have no idea if the whole council supports, oh, let's do this with our partner this, or what about that? You haven't been able to share with us all the information that you know.
Well, let's, let's, just to be clear, I mean, we've got, to my knowledge, two emails regarding offers that were made to the city regarding a potential deal? A purchased leaseback so that city wouldn't have to come up with money to buy a building? And that they would lease it back to us? You know, if there are further calls of different nature, then, you know, the city manager can talk about that. I don't want to give the perception that we're, we're missing out on all these great deals just because of inaction of council, that is not the case.
But your statement that to your knowledge is exactly the point that Counselor Noesworthy is making. None of us know what we don't know. So just-
That's why I'm asking if, you know, I don't need to know specific deals unless there is an offer on the table that we should go into. I need to know, do we need this building? What was it due for us? And as a city and, and for staff? And if not a use for us, what does it do for our community? If we were, a lot of cities have a role in purchasing a building to land bank it? And providing incubator space for opportunities, as you all know, for working with the Economic Alliance? I think Michael French should be part of this conversation moving forward. Those kinds of things are the role that the city should take in public.
And I don't think anyone disagrees that we should have public conversation. That's not, that's not the point, so.
Right, right. So let's, let's evaluate how we approach this? And have the city, have the staff come back and say, these are the kind of methods, here's how we could utilize it. Simple statement, it's, it's, it's that easy. And then we can, if there's a deal comes out of that, let's go into executive session and talk about it. So that, that's-
I think it's important, I do want to, from a deal perspective, the deal's not going to come to us baked. Any deal is going to come to us with a session of, hey, what do you think of this? Is this something that maybe, maybe you don't need all the space that this has? But maybe, you know, maybe we could use a portion of this space. I'm making, I'm going from previous experience with deals. So a, a deal's not going to come and say all baked up and wrapped in- So a deal's not going to come and say all baked up and wrapped in a bow. It's going to be, do we want to pursue this? Is this a potential partnership that could make sense? Should I not waste any time with this and say, no, you know, it doesn't make any sense and let's, you know, cut our losses? So again, I believe that we're missing an opportunity for the city manager to share some information with us. I don't think it's inappropriate. I don't think it's being not forthright with the public. That's my own view.
So the other thing about the that I'm concerned about is that we're focusing on a building, and I think we're not focusing on the opportunity that that something like this gives us. If there are, there's so many things that this connects with, you know, we, if we can consolidate our operations and make them more efficient and more effective, if we can take the police station building and do a private public partnership to redo that, redevelop it into mixed use with housing downtown and retail downtown and commercial downtown, the same thing with River City Hall, the same thing with City Hall. This is an opportunity to create what Mayor Brooke was concerned about, which is jobs and housing in the center of our city. Additionally, we don't need the whole space of the Mercury Building, most probably. What other opportunities can we give to other community members and businesses to have that kind of opportunity to be there, too? These are the things we're trying to talk about. It's the big picture. It's not just one building. It's what's the whole thing? And it's going to take a lot of time and effort to figure this out. Staff time, dollars, thoughts, and if we don't give some direction pretty soon about where we want to go, then we're going to be spending a whole bunch of money and with staff time and effort, and and maybe it's not even going in the right direction. So I think that's why direction is so important.
I I I I totally agree with the thoughts, and that's exactly what I was trying to articulate, is that, in fact, our the Urban Renewal Authority has already identified it as a as a candidate for inclusion in the urban renewal.
That's that building is not applicable for urban renewals specifically because then because we don't focus on brand new buildings. We focus on the area.
Excuse me, the Urban Renewal Authority would define an area inclusive of that building.
Yes, I understand that.
Allow a future owner, developer, whatever, to participate in an urban renewal authority and the benefits of that. So that's just what you're I'm agreeing with you, Kim, is that it is a bigger picture, and it's not a picture that we're going to give direction to anybody or anybody can answer in an executive session this evening. This conversation-
Well, I disagree with you on that. I think we could give direction in an executive session. I really do, and I think we could have some more answers. So I disagree with you on that.
But that's the kind of open ended and, you know, inexpert kind of circling around the information that the staff hasn't evaluated that is not worth going into a non-public session to discuss at this time. Right? They need to give us more information and have that developed to be able to study because none of you are experts at any of this. They are. And so they need to they need to study it and give us good information for us to be able to have that session and make it worthwhile.
So that's what we've done this evening. I think if we can anticipate a study session, elongated study session or a special session, depends if there's if if after the initial investigation tomorrow and this later this week, we have something to talk about quicker. Obviously, we're nimble in that respect. We can respond quickly. This is a real estate off potential, but it's been it's it's here. It's we haven't got a price tag on it. There is not a price tag on it. We'll find out if there will be and when and all those issues and hear back from our staff soon.
And I would just like to add to that, Dean, that a price tag is not required to go into executive session. We just want to make that clear.
I also it is not necessary for me to go into an executive session to be able to provide direction. I think we can actually do the opposite in executive session and say, these are our limits. These are our price limits. Anything beyond that, it's out of our reach. And those are the kind of conversations we're not able to have right now either.
I I am in no way, no way interested in offering a limit of any amount of money of city taxpayer dollars until we know if we even need a building. That's my point.
I understand that, but you're you keep emphasizing that we don't know how much the building will cost. And to back it can to Counselor Baxter's point, this is about an opportunity, and I think it's about direction.
There's nothing no disagreement, and I think there's plenty of direction been given, offered this evening. So with that, we'll move up, we'll move on. And if there's no other benefit to the city of Durango, I adjourn this meeting. And thank you very much. Thanks, everybody, for important conversation and and good, good banter and great debate. I appreciate your time.